Seems to be working, good.
Just needed the pin?
Yeah.
Oh.
Seems to be working, good.
Good.
Just needed the pin?
Yeah.
Oh.
Good evening. Call to order, the Andover Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals this October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. We'll start out with a roll call.
Lynn Heath.
Bill Schnaber.
Brian Lindebak.
Gary Israel.
Alex Zarchin.
Eric Peterson.
All right, we have some minutes from the September eighteenth meeting. Looking for some action on that item.
Chairman and I move that we approve the meetings from September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from two thousand eighteen.
I second that motion.
And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. We have some communications from our committee and staff reports, as well as potential zoning report. Residential, any comments or questions on that?
None here.
None?
No.
Less any new, okay.
How many permits have been pulled in the last month? You know?
In the last month, I think there were just two. There are thirty-eight so far this year.
Okay.
Okay. All right. There's no other questions of staff at this time, we'll move on to item number five. Item number five is reconsideration of application for a special use request to allow for the expansion of a post-secondary education facility in I-1 industrial district on property located at seven fifteen East Thirteenth Street, Andover, Kansas. On September eleventh, two thousand eighteen, the city council unanimously adopted the findings of the factors recommended by the planning commission and approved the ordinance allowing the special use with the conditions attached to the planning commission. However, the mayor, Mayor Ben Lawrence exercised his power to veto the ordinance on, so on September twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, the city council considered the matter and ultimately voted to return this case to the planning commission for further considerations outlined in, and the materials we have, including the seventeen findings and factors. So some of you were here that night of the special use back in...
August.
August. Some of those were not there. Is there a will of the governing body as to, well, first of all, go through a couple items for housekeeping issues? Well, there's no notification of this for the current meeting, but there was a notification in the Butler County Times Gazette on July twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, and notices were mailed to the applicant, and twenty days has elapsed from the publication of July twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen. And so, proper notification has been given. Are there anybody that, on the commission, that wishes to disqualify themselves or, or wish to recuse themselves of this item?
Brian, I will recuse myself from the voting of this item.
Okay. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Has there been any ex parte communication on this item with anybody?
No.
No.
Nope.
Okay. And none here. Well, normally I'll ask less, I mean, there's a lot of material here, a lot of history on this case, or these cases, or this case and there's previous cases for similar action items. If you would want to give us a little bit of a synopsis of what's gone on for the past...
Ten years?
Yeah.
In that, in that veto of the latest, some of the ordinance conditions from the prior special uses, so we included those in your packet so you can maybe get a feel for the flavor of the discussion back in two thousand three and two thousand five.
Mm-hmm. And just for the general public, what were the, what was the resolution on those items?
In the, in the ordinance, there was a condition that some things like athletic activities would have a presence in Andover, and that the college would, would sell some unutilized property that they owned, and that they would eventually work out of the Twenty-first and Andover building and get more consolidated in one space. Most of those conditions have been, in the most part, at least in the most part, they've been complied with.
Mm-hmm.
But you'll see in the mayor's summary that he takes issue with, with a few of the conditions.
I'm sure someone else might have some questions of staff on this prior to...
No.
No?
No.
Okay. I think we have, you know, some basic items to address first, as that is, you know, are we going to open this up to a public hearing? Do we want to hear a public, hear a presentation again? And, you know, those are some things I'd like to get some input from the bench here and, and see how we move forward.
I guess there was one factor, I had, in the mayor's letter, he mentioned that, something about opposition to it, that there, in his opinion, that there would be opposition to it, and I'd like to know if that is the case or not, if, because at the last meeting there was none. I don't think in any of the previous meetings they had shown any support one way or the other, or opposition to it. I've not received anything, I think the only way that you, you could open that avenue up is to reopen the public hearing and let the applicant and any in support or any opposed to speak.
All right.
Yep. I'm not opposed if we open it up, if anybody has questions, and if we get any more comments from anybody in the community who might be for or against this.
Certainly, and I, I think the key there is new information.
Yes.
Right.
We've heard the public hearing, we've got the minutes of the city council meeting, it's, it's about anything that's new that might influence this discussion.
All right.
I don't have an issue with it, yeah?
We did, we did have a request from the council for you to consider to go over the seventeen factors again, and look at the mayor's veto, so I don't know if you'd want to do that first, I don't know if you mean to draw any conclusions, but just reading out what, what the mayor vetoed, what his specific reasons were, so everybody in the audience can understand again what we're reviewing here. We don't have to make any decisions, but I think starting that way with what, what his logic was, I guess, is why we're here.
Yeah, I think that's...
I think that would be a prudent first step.
Yeah.
I do.
Would, would anybody like to read, Gary, I think that'd be a good...
We can find it there.
Would you like to read through the mayor's seventeen findings?
This one? Yes. Let me see. I'm wondering if this one here, but it's...
October sixteen?
Yeah, starting with the...
The one that says factors on the second page, factor, on the second, third page, it has factors written.
Yeah, it starts with factor six.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah.
Sure, I could read that.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, just, these are some of the things that were, just for the public's notice. This is to the Andover Planning Commission from Mark Detter, city administrator regarding ordinance sixteen...
Do you want to, you want to back up? I, I did give you some of my recommended, but there should be something specifically from the mayor in the...
Oh, okay.
It's much, much like the same.
Okay. Hey, this is to the Andover City Council, ordinance sixteen seventy-nine dated September thirteen, two thousand eighteen, from Mayor Ben Lawrence. And he just has some information, a little background information, but as we've been requested to go over the factors and findings, he starts off with factor number six. And it says, adequate street access is not currently provided. As enrollment has increased through the years, traffic has also increased, and the arterial road servicing this property does not meet the peak traffic loads according to engineering standards. The cost to expand and rebuild this road should be shared by the subject property, as is the case of many of our other developments. I see no current agreement in place to do so. Additionally, with the addition of Yorktown Expansion to the east of the subject property and Commerce Street heading west, there is not sufficient right-of-way granted, the minimum, in the minimum, a separate agreement should be placed before approving this request.
Okay.
So, any comments?
Yeah.
From the big point? Yeah, I, I would agree, I, you know, I, I work at Vornado on Thirteenth Street, and some days it's very difficult to get out of our parking lot, because it's a two-lane road, and a lot of the students are coming and going to school. Traffic backs up at the light, and sometimes I've missed making through the light just to get home. So, I know there's traffic issues, but it just seems to be getting worse since I've been there, and I've been at Vornado now, oh, since they built the building in ninety-two? It's quite a while, so...
I have, I have a question, I guess, for staff on that, if I could?
Yeah, absolutely.
The, the statement the mayor makes where he says, the cost to expand and rebuild this road should be shared by the subject property, as is the case of many of our other developments, I was just, I wanted to get a sense, is that typically the case?
That's a really good point, Eric. What we're looking at tonight is an expansion of an existing site, however, at the same time, we're considering a plat of the entire property. So you, you really need to look at it through the lens of, as if this were a vacant site, what would your considerations be of the access controls and the required improvements of the entire site, not just the existing building, but all of the surrounding area?
Thank you.
I think it's worthy to note that the overall size of the site is, is, and give or take a few acres, is about forty acres, and that's a sizable amount of land for a lot of developments in Andover, whether it's industrial, commercial, or residential, and, you know, some of the, if you had, there's a lot of trip generations that are created at, at certain peak hours in a business like this, and so I, I think the, the mayor's comments on this, and my personal opinion is, I think that they are, they are valid, and, and there's a, a reason to consider that factor six.
Sometime that's going to have to be a four-lane road.
For sure. And probably provisions for making, you know, cost sharing on that, it would seem reasonable.
Okay. Factor number seven. Staff and planning commission both concurred that the property will need to be platted. As such, they added a provision to the approval that it would need to be completed within the next twelve months. I take issue with the fact that this property has not already been platted. They have had thirteen years to plat it, but have not done so yet. The plat is the instrument by which the city can acquire the R O W and dictate terms and costs associated with road construction, and put other important agreements in place. An acceptable plat needs to precede this request in the minimum. Without the plat, there is no guarantee of anything, and Andover residents may, may very well end up footing the bill for what should be a country, or county-wide issue.
Thoughts from the bench?
What's R O W?
Oh, right-of-way.
Right-of-way, oh, okay.
Yeah. Less, and, you know, I probably wasn't clear, clear on this in my memo, is, I thought the plating requirement was not triggered until a new structure was constructed on the grounds. Is that what triggered the plating requirement?
Actually, the zoning case is what opened the door to the planning.
This, yeah, this was annexed years ago, never had been platted, and...
Right, I, I went back to the, the beginning here, historically, to look at the industrial area, Sherwin-Williams factory was built in nineteen sixty-nine, it was annexed into the city at that time. This property was owned by a company called Lanco, I think they originally built motorcycle helmets in this building, built back in nineteen seventy-two, annexed at that time, water and sewer were extended at that time.
I think what he's contending is the plat should have been required, I guess, during the last special use permit. Was there a reason why it wasn't platted when the college originally took control of the property?
The plating is an option that the city can exercise if they will.
Okay, so...
Being an industrial property, quite oftentimes industrial properties aren't platted there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I think plating is a, a good way to create order in our community, and I think it's a, I think a, it's a minimum, it's almost a minimum standard that we should be looking to, as properties develop, they need to be platted or replatted, and, so we can consider matters of extension of utilities and so forth.
But, but if I understood right, Less and Mark, it was that there wasn't a step necessarily skipped, it can be done and it can't be done, it just was chosen not to be done?
It's an option.
Okay.
And, and for the, again, for the audience, this, this matter is, they are pla, planning to plat this property, and it's been reviewed.
Correct. You remember at your last meeting, the plat of the property was approved by the planning commission.
And I just think it's good for those of the public to know that the, the plating has now gone through the, this, this body and, and the subdivision committee, so that minimum standard has been checked. Okay?
Okay. Factor nine, let me go in there. The factor actually says, are suitable vacant lands or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? And the mayor's response, there is in fact suitable land and buildings available for development and usage if this zoning request is denied. As previously mentioned, the corner of Twenty-first and Andover Road is still owned by the college and could be expanded or remodeled to accommodate the influx of new classrooms needed, should they continue to ignore the provisions of the previous ordinance to sell that property. So I know Less you brought up the fact that, or somebody had that that property has not yet sold, and...
Correct. The college still owns the property, they still operate classes out of the property. I, I know there were some master planning activities going on at the college, and I'm sure that's addressed in that master plan.
I, I have a question about the, the word provision in that, that made me think that it was kind of a, almost a requirement. Am I reading that wrong? And it was, I'm sure it was in my pile, and I actually looked through everything, but I probably missed that. Yeah, from an oh-three or an oh-five? I just wasn't, I, I, it may not be, be important to the conversation, but I didn't know if it was something where if, if then, kind of a deal, or if it was just, yeah, we're going to try and sell it.
You might point us in the right direction here on what you're looking at there, Less.
What I'm looking at is the minutes from that July twenty-six, two thousand five city council meeting where they, where they approved the ordinance for the special use at that time.
Got it right here.
So that there's an additional fifteen feet of right-of-way dedication on the south side of Thirteenth Street, that's been done. That the applicant drafted a comprehensive plan, I know they've done that, I've seen it.
I think it's in point four, Less, I think I saw it.
Four, applicant agrees to remove any and all portables and the existing metal building at the northeast corner of Andover Road and Twenty-first Street by November one, two thousand five, and will return the gravel parking to grass or new paving by December thirty-one, two thousand five, subject to local ordinances, approvals, and permits by the city of Andover. That's been done. It's further acknowledged, excuse me, by the applicant, that it is their intention to sell this property to taxable commercial entity with regard to price and buyer's willingness to allow the college to use the permanent building for classes until it can create new replacement classroom space. I think that's the point that the mayor takes issue with, that the college hasn't offered the property up for sale, and it continues to use it.
Is it, is that property at that corner big enough to meet their proposed training?
I can't answer that question, Lynn.
Save that if you, if we bring the applicant up. Any other questions on that item? Okay, and you look at item number eleven?
Yeah. Factor number eleven, is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted? And the mayor's response, the property is not suitable for the current zoning. I renew my objection of placing a community college in the middle of an industrial park. It is not a compatible use. Further, I do not agree that a special use for educational institutions is allowed in our industrial regulations.
Any discussion on that item?
Well, what, I was on the, on the committee when we did this a few years ago, and one of the things that we was looking at was nothing else was happening in this area, so let's utilize it for something. And, and that, that's one reason why this, the Butler County moved over there, or the college, because...
Lynn hit on a great point there. Back in two thousand three, there were over a hundred acres of property zoned industrial around this site that were vacant, and not being utilized for industry.
And it was...
I'll, I'll go on the record that back in two thousand three, I was opposed to this special use because of the, the nature of the incompatibility between students and industry, but it's proven over the years to be a fairly good fit.
Well, and it, there's still a lot of vacant land over there, too, if I remember right. I don't know how, how much it is, but, I mean, it hasn't slowed down and kept people from coming into this, this town to build some, an industrial park.
I, I would agree with that, however, I mean, this is, I mean, I'm not sure if I have the numbers just right, I'm just guessing by, by the looks of things, it looked like it may be, oh, maybe, maybe a little under a quarter of all of our industrial land in Andover, I'm not, I mean, that might be a little bit high, but it is a significant amount of industrial land, and should, should we ever get an industrial user, we're kind of compromising our industrial corridor by allowing a...
And it was, I'm sure it was in my pile, and I actually looked through everything, but I probably missed that. Yeah, from an oh-three or an oh-five. I just wasn't, I, I, it may not be, be important to the conversation, but I didn't know if it was something where if, if then, kind of a deal. Or if it was just, yeah, we're gonna try and sell it.
You might point us in the right direction here on what you're looking at there, Les.
What, what I'm looking at is the minutes from that July twenty-six, two thousand and five city council meeting where they, where they approved the ordinance for the special use at that time.
Got it right here.
So that there's an additional fifteen feet of right-of-way dedication on the south side of Thirteenth Street. That's been done. Uh, that the applicant draft a comprehensive plan. I know they've done that. I've seen it.
I think it's in point four, Les. I think I saw it.
Four, applicant agrees to remove any and all portables and the existing metal building at the northeast corner of Andover Road and Twenty-first Street by November one, two thousand and five, and will return the gravel parking to grass or new paving by December thirty-one, two thousand and five, subject to local ordinance's approvals and permits by the City of Andover. That's been done. It's further acknowledged, excuse me, by the applicant, that it is their intention to sell this property to taxable commercial entity with regard to price and buyer's willingness to allow the college to use the permanent building for classes until it can create new replacement classroom space. I think that's the point that the mayor takes issue with, that the college hasn't offered the property up for sale, and it continues to use it.
Is it, is that property at that corner big enough to meet their proposed train- training?
I can't answer that question, Lynn.
Save that if you, if we bring the applicant up. Any other questions on that item? Okay, do you look at item number eleven?
Yeah. Factor number eleven, "Is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted?" And the mayor's response, "The property is not suitable for the current zoning. I renew my objection of placing a community college in the middle of an industrial park. It is not a compatible use. Further, I do not agree that a special use for educational institutions is allowed i- in our industrial regulations."
Any discussion on that item?
Well, what, I was on the, on the committee when we did this a few years ago, and one of the things that we was looking at was nothing else was happening in this area, so let's utilize it for something. And, and that, that's one reason why this, uh, the Butler County moved over there, or the college. Because...
Lynn hit on a great point there. Back in two thousand and three, there were over a hundred acres of properties owned industrial around this site that were vacant and not being utilized for industry.
And it was...
I'll, I'll go on the record that back in two thousand and three, I was opposed to this special use because of the, the nature of the incompatibility between students and industry. But it's proven over the years to be a fairly good fit.
Well, and it, there's still a lot of vacant land over there, too, if I remember right. I don't know how, how much it is, but... I mean, it hasn't slowed down and kept people from coming into this, in, this town to build some, in, in industrial park.
I, I would agree with that. However, I mean, this is, I mean, I'm not sure if I have the numbers just right. I'm just guessing by, by the looks of things, it looked like it may be, oh, maybe, maybe a little under a quarter of all of our industrial land in Andover. I'm not, I mean, that might be a little bit high, but it is a significant amount of industrial land, and should, should we ever get an industrial user, we're kind of compromising our industrial corridor, um, by allowing us, a school to prevail there. Has it worked presently?
Certainly.
Well, there's another thing that, uh, people moving into town are looking at, and that is developing over next to the turnpike and, um, interstate so they can have easy access to get, you know, where out of Dodge. And this industrial park isn't as convenient for that as what, uh, the land over there next to the, uh, entrance to the turnpike would be.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with that either.
Yeah, well, there's, that's proven.
Well, Brian, you mentioned this to prevail. There's no limitation on this special use permit as it is right now, is there? So it's going to exist.
Well, the, the new land would, would be...
I understand, but you're still going to have an educational facility in the middle of industrial park.
Right, that's right.
Just not big.
Or an expanded one.
Yep.
Yep. I've, I've gone back and read a little bit in comprehensive plans, and even our latest comprehensive plan, that it suggests that there's, there's that good natural break there between the industrial park area and the Republican-run creek divides in, industrial from potential future residential. I, I think it's a good transition point. It's well-stated in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, good point. Okay, further discussion on this item?
The mayor did raise the ability for this educational institution as a special use. And I'm sure you all remember that at the bottom of the list of special uses in nearly one of our zoning, every one of our zoning categories, there is that "all others" clause that allows things not specifically listed to be applied for as a special use.
Right, but it is specifically listed in residential, you know, I mean, and in the zoning, there's nowhere that this type of facility is listed as a special use. I guess you can have the catch-all under it, but just in fairness to the mayor, that probably was not the intent of the regulations starting out with.
Well, churches and, you know, they have a lot of special areas or whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on.
Factor twelve, "To what extent would removal of the restrictions, such as the approval of the zoning request, detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood?" The mayor's response, "Staff and the P- Planning Commission agreed that the approval of the zoning request would detrimentally affect other property with increased activities and traffic, yet overlooked this factor in approving the case." I would think the only comment on that is, yeah, it's gonna increase the activity and the traffic. We just need to look at how we take care of that.
That's what I was gonna bring up.
Yes. And that's where, you know, going back to the first point.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I think that's a, a reasonable, again, a reasonable thing to, uh, consider.
But over the years, we have not stopped developing a part of town because it only had a two-lane road. What we did is we dealt, developed the part of town, and then we put in a four-lane road.
I think the difference is certain properties generate taxes. This consumes taxes.
He's gonna pay for it.
And there's no, no, no way to, uh, generate income that would be utilized for a road, and you're talking forty acres. I mean, that's, that's real money.
Yeah.
Mm-huh, yep.
So I think, I think those are valid points. Any other discussion on that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, factor thirteen, "Would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of these regulations?" The mayor's response, "Again, although a special use request is available in all zoning classifications, I do not agree that the zoning district classification, industrial, is consistent with an educational facility. What I will particularly con- what I find particularly confusing is that there is no mention in the minutes or recordings of the Planning Commission meeting of August twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, as to which this special use category would fall under in the industrial regulations. I am left to guess what the Planning Commission has used. If they conclude the special use to fall under the zoning regulations in section five, or C-dash-five, which states, 'Other uses not otherwise specifically listed as a permitted use or conditional use, but which are in keeping with the intent of the section four-dash-one-one-five and compatible with the uses permitted in section four-dash-one-one-five,' which is my best guess, then I believe they are misinterpreting the regulations. This does not adhere to the spirit or intention of the zoning regulations as an educational facility is specifically in, allowed in Ag, R-one, and B-one only. Either way, the recommendation is devoid of this piece of information and should be reviewed for consistency and accuracy."
So I guess that's what I was trying to articulate earlier, was he does point out that in specific zones, it's permitted, and we just kind of used a catch-all in this situation, which, you know, he would argue is not the intent, you know, that's, I can see both sides of the, the issue, but I think he articulates that, again, ideally, you would never put an educational facility in the middle of an industrial area. Uh, as you've pointed out, though, we're here, and, you know, that's the tough part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's been permitted twice before, so obviously, there's a precedent, but now we need to look at, you know, how best to, to work with that precedent and...
Well, I would have, this information was not, I mean, it was available, was not given to any of us. I was not on the, you know, the Planning Commission back in two thousand and five, so I knew nothing of the history of this. It would have, I think, been influential to have this, the same information we are giving tonight, you know, a month ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it would have been nice back in two thousand and five to have a crystal ball and be able to see where
That's true.
the community college is today.
Mm-huh.
You know, if we looked at what the enrollment was back then and what it's increased to today, I mean, yeah, probably would have been best to have said, yeah, let's look at developing Twenty-first and Andover Road. Let's make a beautiful community college up there where it's accessible and visible, as opposed to being stuck back in an industrial park.
Good point.
Yep.
So how do we want to address this one? I think we do need to somewhat address this as a, as a body. Do we, do we somewhat agree to what he's saying, or do we disagree, or?
No, I think we need to be more specific and articulate what we really want in there. You know, like he says, you know, we need to be consistent and accurate.
Okay. All right. All right, item fourteen.
Okay, fourteen, "Is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan? And does it further enhance the implement, implementation of the plan?" The mayor's response, "While the Planning Commission nor staff did not address this factor yes or no, the request is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan because BCC is not mentioned at all in the comprehensive plan. I see no valid conclusion as how a new special use request complements or enhances this plan and should have not been a factor in determining to approve the request. I do believe, however, that BCC should be considered an important community member in the next update of the comprehensive plan."
Concur.
Anybody else concur? Anybody else concur?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I had to think about it. I do.
Les, we might ask you for any additional comment on this item?
I did go back to the comprehensive plan and, and look through the entire document again, and there is no specific mention of BCC.
Okay.
It's, it's shown in the future land use map and the existing land use map as an educational facility. The vacant land is shown as vacant land on the existing land use map and industrial land on the future land use map. But there is no, no text about the role that BCC plays in the community.
Okay. It is education, though, and we, we do stress some education in our communities, so...
I agree.
So I, while it may not point to it exactly, I think there's probably some indications that, you know, education facilities are encouraged in our community.
I agree. I'm glad you said that.
And so I, I think, you know, the, does it directly contradict, or, I mean, can we use that as a supporting factor? Maybe, but I think also, you know, on the guise of, you know, of education, but maybe, uh, you know, maybe not specifically, since it, we don't have a specific calling out of, of this, if you will, tenet of the property, this, this user of the property.
But just to clarify, it does show in the future land use plan where it's in existence that it's education. You're saying the land next to it is just listed, listed as vacant land, or?
It's listed as vacant land in the existing land use plan and industrial land in the future land use plan.
So again, you've kind of got this contradiction of...
And, and, and quite frankly, the comprehensive plan is that crystal ball. You're trying to look into the future and say, what makes the most sense here? In, in certain lights, if it was not being, going to be utilized for educational facility, it might make sense that it was an industrial property because there is industrial uses nearby, and it is very compatible with other industrial, so I, I, I don't... Yeah, I, I guess we can waffle around here. So I would somewhat, you know, personally, I think I would somewhat agree with his comment there. We ready to move on to next item?
Yes. Yes. Factor seventeen, "By comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or in, loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request?" The mayor, the mayor responded, "While the Planning Commission noted no visible opposition to the request and simply stated, 'It is better to approve this request,' I am of the belief that there are many in the community tiring of the ever-increasing expansion and greater taxation by Butler Community College to educate an estimated eighty percent-plus percentage of students who do not reside nor pay their fair share of property taxes in Butler County. While most recognize the importance of a good edu- education and feel that BCC is doing a great job at that, they also note that the funding of this college by only those who reside in the county, yet service a much greater area, is simply not fair. The out-of-county tuition versus the in-county tuition rates do not even begin to re- relieve the economic burden that the residents of the city of Andover and Butler County as a whole have to shoulder to allow a greater expansion of their current facilities to serve an ever-increasing out-of-county, including state, national, and international student population that does not reside in Butler County, provide serious negative gain to the general economic welfare of our residents. It puts Andover at a competitive disadvantage for new businesses and housing starts when comparing our tax rates to the surr- surrounding region."
It's hard to argue with that, isn't it?
Well, I'm sure there's a lot of opinions on this item, and, uh, you know, I think, you know, we might just ask that everybody keep their opinions themselves unless you want to, to voice your opinion. I think, uh, you know, I, I could, I could go both ways, but I could certainly see his point, uh, in this, and it makes a lot, a lot of sense, actually.
This question is meant to be that scales of all the pros and cons of, of the application that's before you. Are there, there things that outweigh others, not? It, it isn't a scorekeeping game. It's not about the numbers, how many questions are pro and how many are con. It's about factors that outweigh each other or complement each other.
You know, four factors might equal one, or less.
Or one might outweigh four.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the only comment I have, it, it's, was quite an eye-opener that eighty percent, and I'd like to know if that is ac- actually true, that eighty percent of the students that come to the Andover campus do not reside in Butler County.
Where did, where did that number come from?
Yeah, because in two thousand and three or five in the report there, I believe it was mentioned that sixty percent of the enrollment was from Butler County.
I think we'd probably have to ask the applicant unless staff knows of otherwise. Sure.
Yeah.
So I think we might have a couple of questions of the applicant at this point. Well, uh, you know, we've had, those are all, uh, you know, I guess there's a, a summary of, of recommendations. I think we still need to go through that. Go for it.
Okay. The mayor had his recommendations in there, R-three. Number one, "I urge the council to heavily consider and place more weight into factor seventeen specifically. We have discussed this issue in depth and have repeatedly stated and recognized the true economic tax burden that the college places upon us. If we do not take a stand now, the tax and spin policy of the college will continue to spiral out of control." Number two, "I would encourage the council to send this back to the Planning Commission for further explanation of how this special use falls under industrial zoning. I believe we are not utilizing the zoning regulations properly and as intended." Number three, "I do recognize that a plat of this property is currently under design only by our staff's insistence, but I would hope the council would demand and expect proper plating and zoning of the property so it meets the obligations and intentions of our zoning regulations before we consider this case again."
Les, which zoning classification best suits a college of this si- size of forty acres or better?
College classes first appears in the B-three central shopping district as a permitted use.
Yeah. I just ac- asked that question from a, a standpoint of, if we had dialed it back to two thousand and three, what would be the best spot to put this? That's the reason why I asked the question, not as to why, you know, what it is now and...
And also in the R-zones, public and private schools, educational buildings for primary, intermediate, and secondary schools. Which, in my opinion, that doesn't include college classes. That's, that's the K-through-twelves.
Do we have any facts or figures on how many students actually, actually reside in Andover? Maybe that are... I know that we have already talked about asking that question, but, you know, do we have any facts of our own, uh, as the Andor?
Ask them, but I think we're estimating between three and four, three, three to four thousand.
Three, four.
But, but remember that includes what's at the high school right now. So you could ask them what they think now and what they project.
Okay. All right. Well, at this time, I had asked that, you know, this body consider questions from the applicant. Uh, this is, we have not opened it up for public comment at this point, but if we so choose to do that, I think, uh, we, you know, we could certainly do that if we have further questions. But, uh, I think it would be appropriate to ask any questions from the applicant. Please come forward and state your name and address and, and all that good information for the record.
Thank you. My name is Ray Conell. I'm an attorney. I've been general counsel for the college for the last twenty eight years. Been an attorney here in Butler County for the last forty two. And I remember being in front of you, Lynn, in two thousand five when this special use first came up. Uh, I want to clarify some things. When we were here in two thousand five, Clark Nelson, who's an attorney and now on the city commission was the chairman, uh, Brian, and everybody reviewed the request for special use. That building had been vacant for a long, long time. So there wasn't any, uh, industrial, uh, use of that facility at that time. Uh, the college had an opportunity to use that for classrooms and requested from the city approval to do so. The city planning board in two thousand five, after a public hearing, uh, and going over the Golden versus city of Overland Park seventeen factors that you've been discussing, concurred unanimously that it was an appropriate use. And they recommended to the city commission that it be approved, and that was unanimous. Everybody on the planning board in two thousand five recommended that. It went to the city commission and they discussed it. And unanimously, each city commissioner in two thousand five voted to approve that special use. And it was only then that the mayor, who happened to be the same mayor now, exercised a veto and said he would not approve it. And he gave thirteen factors that he wanted the city to, excuse me, he wanted the college to acquiesce from, um, sending a letter to Topeka, approving the hospital application to, uh, selling the corner property at Andover Road, uh, that the college had been using for classrooms, athletic activities, things like that. So those were reviewed. Uh, they aren't really land use conditions. They don't fall into the law here in Kansas, which I've been doing for a long time. You know, light, sound, uh, screening, those kind of things that come along with, with land use, uh, applications. Nonetheless, um, those were addressed. And an ordinance was approved by the city commission after the veto, approving a special use for this building to be used for classrooms. And it has been for the last thirteen years, from two thousand five to two thousand eighteen. That's been the use. Okay? Those factors in two thousand five, I believe there were, uh, five or six of them. But one was sell the property at the corner of Andover Road and, um, Twenty First Street. And I'm going to speak to that because that was a four acre tract. We removed the mo- mobile classrooms. We put it back the way it was requested to be put back. The college owned thirty four acres on the southeast corner of that intersection. And the college voluntarily sold that property at that time, and it's become commercial. You have a, um, it's not a quick trip, but it's.
Casey's.
Casey's, sure.
Casey's, thank you. All those apartments that are behind there, they were built. All of that land went on Andover's public tax rolls. As a result of the college voluntarily selling that property, wasn't required. Now, that property that was requested to be sold, the four acres, has not because it's continued to be used as classrooms. And it's part of the classroom activities of the college. So I wanted to clarify that point. The, the other thing I wanted to clarify was it wouldn't be a special use permit request today were it not for your school district asking the college to vacate the classrooms that they've been using for the last ten or fifteen years. Longer than that, thank you. Uh, they need the, the space for the high school students. And as a result, they asked the college if they would voluntarily move from the high school. And the facility that makes the most sense for those classrooms is the one that they've been using the last thirteen years. So they filed a special use permit. It went before you. There was no opposition to my knowledge. And I guess the question was asked, Mr. Chairman, how many people here in the audience tonight are in favor of the college's request for a special use so the classrooms from the high school can be moved to this facility? Would you stand? Okay, so there's a significant support for this project. You didn't hear anybody object. The mayor had an opportunity to be here when you had this discussion before on the, on the special use permit and outlined these concerns and chose not to. It went from you, a unanimous recommendation to the city commission. They reviewed it and they voted unanimously to approve this most recent special use permit. And the mayor didn't issue a veto at that point. He didn't mention any of these factors at that point. It wasn't until two weeks later that he issued a veto and what you've read denied us what the reasons were. Now, I don't think that's fair. You can decide. But my last comment, Mr. Chairman, you can send it back to the city commission without doing anything at all. The plat's been applied for. It's being, uh, processed. It was approved by you. It addresses a street issue. It addresses water and sewer issues. I would recommend that you seriously consider a vote tonight, send it back to the city commission. Don't make any changes in your recommendation and let the city commission decide whether they want the classrooms that are in the high school now to be in this facility or not. And so that's a, a point that I wanted to raise. Thank you very much.
I believe there's a couple of questions, uh, if you could come back up, please. We do have a few questions. I think one question I have, and since we did go for the, um, support, is there anybody here in opposition of this case? Please stand up or raise your hand.
I'd like the record to reflect that there's not one person here tonight opposed to this application.
Okay.
And the record should also reflect, there's probably sixty or seventy five people here that are supportive of it.
Okay.
How many are employees of?
I don't know. We didn't have a raise a hand. I'm an employee. I'm a general counsel, but I, I don't work directly for them.
So a good majority of the folks in the audience are employees?
Yes, but they're also Butler County citizens and they pay taxes and, you know.
Certainly. Uh, I think we had some questions about the percentage of students in, in Andover that actually attend the college and, and the surrounding areas.
Sure. And I'll, uh, call on the president of the college, Kim Crowell, Dr. Crowell, to address that. But I'm going to emphasize to you, that's not a land use issue. It may be a political issue. You may feel like you have a strong feeling one way or the other, but you can't tie the review of a special use permit to somebody, um, raising tuition, you know, or not taking students from Cedric County, only students from Butler County. That's not legally permitted. I just point that out to you.
It's just for information purposes, so it just.
Thank you for the opportunity to answer questions. I don't know if I can give you exact numbers. Uh, one of the questions or one of the comments that was raised was that eighty percent of the students that come uh, to the Andover campus come from outside of Butler County. And that's not an accurate statement. Eighty percent of our students that come to Butler as a whole come from outside of Butler County, out of state, out of county, across the state and international. So that's not quite an accurate statement when you feel, when you say that that percentage just come to the Andover campus. Because we have a number of those coming to our El Dorado campus. We have them enrolled online, uh, and, and at other sites as well. About half, is that right Heather? Half, half of the high school students that we have currently enrolled in our classes are Andover students. So they're your Andover high school students that come to us. So, that, does that help?
Does that suffice survey?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
I have, I have one question. I don't quite know how to ask it, but that the proximity between where the Andover spot is at the high school spot and, and this building is not that great. Um, distance wise, really, in the scheme of things. About how many students would be transitioning from where they're going now to where they would be going? And I don't, I apologize if I asked it poorly.
In classes in the, in the high school building total Lori or Heather? About thirty percent of our enrollments in the, in the high school building.
Okay.
Um, and, and to clarify as well, this is not an expansion. There's a, there's a misnomer, I think, out that, that we are expanding our facilities. We are simply transferring the same number of offices, the same number of faculty offices, the same number of classrooms that we're currently using in the high school to that site on Thirteenth. The only thing that we're adding is an additional science lab because we currently don't have enough lab space to meet the demand of our current students. And we also would like to add a larger meeting space because we don't have enough meeting space or a large enough meeting space in our current building on Thirteenth Street to even have a space for the employees in that building, all of them to gather together. So it's really not an expansion. It's a transfer or a relocation of those, uh, exact services to that other site.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the college or their agents? Please do.
I, I don't know if you had access to, uh, the college responded to the mayor's veto and provided, um, our rationale and response to his concerns. And we shared that with, um, uh, the city council folks, I think, got that information. I didn't know whether you had gotten that as well, but that may clarify if you have some other questions as well.
Somebody didn't get it?
Maybe if you would just summarize some of your points, uh, if, if that, that might be more efficient.
You're getting plenty of exercise.
If you could please come back forward and summarize your points. So we, I think it'd be important.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we don't have time to read them.
Yeah, we, um, as I responded, I addressed, uh, a response to each of the actual seven conditions that were part of the ordinance that was passed in two thousand five. Um, uh, in relationship to factor number six, uh, where there was a concern about adequate street access not currently provided. Um, my response was that, uh, to date, no improvements have been ordered by the city for improvements to Thirteenth Street. However, we have not denied participation in making those improvements and in the shared cost. Uh, we had granted, uh, right away, uh, or I'm sorry, right away width for Yorktown and Commerce Streets had been provided per mutual agreement between Butler and the Andover city staff. And they were outlined in the preliminary and the final plat that, that has been worked on. Um, we also, uh, right away, uh, width for Thirteenth had been increased by ten feet to the south and subtracted from Butler property to accommodate future Thirteenth Street improvements. Um, we were, you know, certainly willing to make those, uh, improvements if we needed to. And, and our, um, master site and facilities plan that was just approved by our board early, uh, this past spring showed future road development as part of our plan for that building on Thirteenth Street. So it's not something that we were ignoring or weren't even thinking about, but it's part of our final master plan, uh, that we anticipated we would need to do that. Uh, related to factor number seven, um, uh, it was jointly agreed between Bu- Butler and city staff that plating would be the proper thing to do. I think we've already discussed the plating thing. And so, uh, you know, it was part of our, uh, reasoning for not having had it in place was just as you mentioned, Les. It wasn't required at that time. Uh, but we, we have coordinated with, uh, city staff and are moving through that process to, uh, get that land platted. I noted in here that back in two thousand three and two thousand five, Andover city staff did not require the property to be platted because the property was continuous in its boundaries. And that there are other lots in the area that currently are in use without a recorded plat. On factor nine, uh, regarding suitable land and buildings available for development, uh, if the zoning request was, was denied. Um, we continue to work under the condition that, uh, was offered in two thousand five that if there was an appropriate price for that land at Twenty First and Andover Road, uh, that our board could consider. Uh, that was one of the considerations, but then we also had to have space to move those classes and offices. The current location there doesn't have enough space to incorporate everything from the high school location to that location on Twenty First and Andover Road. There just is not enough space. There was a question then in factor eleven about the property not, um, suitable for current zoning. Uh, I went through and responded about, uh, the unanimous approval of the prior special use permits, uh, in two thousand three and, um, in two thousand, uh, five. There, there didn't seem to be any concerns noted at that point in time. Um, I did, uh, note that the two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-three comprehensive plan identified that about thirteen percent of the existing land use accommodates business, industrial, institutional and educational land uses with seventy percent zone for residential, um, and about seventeen percent for ag, uh, transition. And we also talked in there about the fact that the college provides a great buffer between industrial and residential, which is growing in that area. And the opportunity that we would have with our, um, special use permit would be to landscape and redo some of the exterior of that building, redo some of the parking and, and increase the, I guess, the, the curb appeal of that building as well. Uh, if we were allowed to, um, have that special use granted. Um, also talked about how, um, it's, uh, would be a great opportunity even on that, uh, um, land to connect walking and biking trails that the city has planned and parkways and things like that for recreational use. On factor twelve, um, the question was, uh, regarding, uh, whether, approval of the zoning request would detrimentally affect other property. Um, and again, there was a question about whether it fell under the right, um, uh, zoning, uh, classifications. And we, uh, identified that, um, it made sense to, um, have you reinterpret that and, you know, go back and review those again. Uh, factor fourteen, um, was related to, uh, the note that the college was not mentioned in the comprehensive plan. Uh, we were mentioned in the two thousand three to two thousand thirteen comprehensive development plan, um, a, a little bit more than we were in the most recent one. We had city council member at the time, Chris Estes, who is a Butler employee that was on that advisory committee as well as Dr. Jackie Vietti, who's our former president. They were both, they were on both of those planning, uh, advisory committees for both of those master plans. So they were directly involved in the development of the comprehensive plan. And I'm sure had, uh, input on the educational, um, uh, importance within this community. And while neither of those plans, uh, identify specific goals or themes related to education, there isn't a section in either one of those plans that specifically identifies education as a priority. Uh, we know that education's a priority in this community. It's obvious. The pride that you take in your school district and the support that, um, the community, uh, gives to the school district. And so we just noted that, that, you know, we, we are a great partner with the high school. Uh, you know, a number of Andover high school students take advantage of the classes. And, uh, our opportunity to be in this community offers low cost education for students. Um, and even some tuition free courses, some short term, short term training. and even some tuition-free courses, some short-term training and faculty development opportunities. We obviously have great connections to, you know, industry training opportunities and partnerships as well. So clinical sites that our students, EMT and nursing students have with the hospital here in town. And so I noted those kinds of things. And then with factor seventeen, the mayors note that regarding the student populations and the taxation issues. I responded first by indicating that factor seventeen really states that by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss of property value? I, I responded to that because we don't frankly believe that the college creates a detriment in that area. We aren't polluting the land. We aren't, you know, we aren't decreasing, we don't believe, because of the things that we do, the value, the property value of our neighbors. But then I did go on to note that we aren't expanding the facilities, just as I've stated. We're, we're doing a relocation of our classrooms and offices. That we believe that the denial will have a lasting impact on the school district. It impacts, it impacts their ability to get their work done and their building project done on time and within budget as well. We've, we have a, have a very cooperative agreement with the high school. And I think that they view us as a critical partner in this community for, for students. And the concern would be, you know, the detriment to student educational opportunities if we aren't allowed to, to do the work that we need to do. I noted that four hundred and sixty high school students were enrolled in Butler's concurrent classes during the fall and spring semesters for a total of more than three thousand credit hours. And this fall alone, three hundred and nine high school, Andover High School students are enrolled in courses. We have early college academies where our students can finish their associate's degrees at the same time that they're finishing their high school diplomas. And the Andover students have access to those educational opportunities in our building on thirteenth street, which is a great opportunity for them to save time and money to, to finish out their associate's degree. And then I also noted that the current meeting space in the five thousand building is not adequate for community use. We would like that additional meeting space so that it's open for, for community to use as well to come to campus. So those were kind of the high points, I guess.
Maybe staying for questions, one question I had was in regards to item number six. I think there was, you know, with the plating and the improvements that need to be made that are associated with the public infrastructure. What, can you expound on what, what plans in your, in your master plan as well as immediate plans to improve public infrastructure?
The master plan identified future connection from Commerce Street, an entrance off of Commerce Street to the campus on the south. And it also identified an entrance off of, potential entrance off of Yorktown. But I think what's actually in the master plan showed better entrances off of thirteenth street. Because when we, when we approved that master plan, we didn't know where Yorktown was going to align at that point in time. We had the easement identified and we knew that, you know, that the easement might come into play. But as we've worked on our building design for this special use permit, some of those very first building designs that we did with Gravity Works and, and Simpsons identified that there would be a major entrance off of Yorktown. Because at that point in time, we knew that that was in conversation and that, that, you know, the city was moving forward with that. So some of those initial design plans, site design plans show the main entrance off of Yorktown because we'd love for people to drive into the front of that student union area and, and, you know, get traffic off of thirteenth street and have them loop through the parking lot in a different way. As far as current plans to do infrastructure, we don't know what's expected. So I can't answer that necessarily, but I can tell you that we've talked about that and talked about the need to be a good partner with infrastructure developments. And so I, you know, I would like to have something that I can take back to the board that we can talk about that relates to infrastructure and what the expectation might be. Because I don't have anything in front of me that really tells me what, you know, what, what that might look like.
Yeah, I think some of the things I read seemed to be that was a major sticking point is getting, getting down to, you know, how some of these shared infrastructure costs are.
Sure.
Normal developments would, would be footing the bill to expand some of these facilities and, and make them better with left turn lanes or right decel lanes or of sorts. So I, you know, I guess, Les, have there been any petitions put forward for some of these improvements?
The city attorney has been working with the college's engineering firm that's drawing the plat on some petitions. I don't think they've come up with anything that is a sufficient petition yet because of the unusual scenario here where the adjoining properties on the east and the south are owned by the same owner who has expressed no intent to do development in the near future.
I, I think though, if I can interject, I think that there's a plan to talk to that property owner, correct? Yes, coming up. And so the college has every intention of talking to the property owner to find out, you know, what, what his intention might be. And, and I think it's important for you to also know that the college has, has always understood that there would be a need for us to partner somehow in future road development. We've, we've never indicated that we weren't interested in doing that at all because we understand the impact of, you know, the increased student population and, and moving those classes over to that location on thirteenth street, so.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
Since this is zoning and everything, how, how do you feel about being out in, in an industrial park?
I don't think we have any concern about that at all. There are community colleges all over the nation that are paired next to industrial areas to create partnerships, to offer opportunities for, you know, students to be right there if there were potential internships and things like that. I, I don't think it creates any kind of health or safety issues for our students. We certainly don't hear any complaints from our folks about being located in that, in that space that I, that I've been aware of since I've been at Butler, and I don't think there have been in the past. I have student forums with students every single month and employees, and I don't ever hear folks complain about, you know, the location of the building.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions of the speaker?
No.
None of the speaker.
Absolutely not.
So Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes.
You and I briefly talked about this earlier. And I think you can go through the factors and respond to the mayor as you want. But one point I want to make, and I said it in my memo, is that I think, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the addition of infrastructure, specifically the improvement of Commerce Street and Yorktown, as would be worked out with our city engineer and our public works director and the schools engineers are key factors in what the, what the city council is contemplating. I think infrastructure is within our seventeen findings of factors. It's perfectly appropriate for the planning commission to make a recommendation for those improvements to be made within a time specific. I would think it would be ideal to make those improvements when the transition of this, or prior to the transition of the students from Andover High going to the community college to occur. And my final point on this is that.
I, I gotta.
The, the mayor, the mayor has vetoed this. So you have to understand, what I'm trying to get the planning commission is to recommend something that will either, you know, make the, make the mayor feel comfortable with, with not vetoing a future ordinance. And/or we have five council members who are comfortable with it, and so therefore you can have an override. I think this is the approach to get there. I realize it's a political recommendation as much as it is an infrastructure thing, but we're trying to, you know, if, if you want to get this accomplished for the college and have this move forward, I think it's going to take these conditions to move it forward. And I think it would be helpful if the planning commission would recommend such.
I, I don't disagree. I think they're, they're reasonable recommendations. I, I think the, you know, the mechanism is the only thing I would question. And I think the mechanism to me would be a petition for improvements. And typically that, that, with a petition to make improvements comes a lot of credit, so.
I, I think we would hope to get those things, but if you put it on as a condition that the street was improved. I'm not talking about the financing of it. You know, it could be that the city would wind up paying something. I'm not going to say that's going to be the situation, but I'm not talking about how it's financed. But in order for the special use permit to be approved, there have to be improvements prior to the building being constructed or at the same time, you know, I don't, you could, you could set a time guideline. And I think that would be something that might influence the mayor, but might also influence the council, at least five of them, to decide that they could go forward with this. I understand we normally use the plating developers agreement for this, but you have to remember, the mayor can't veto a developers agreement. He can't veto a plat. That's, that's not, the only thing he has control over is this ordinance in terms of a veto.
Understood. Any questions?
Clarify for me.
Yeah.
There is no, is there a new structure being built? Or is it just a remodel of the existing facility structures?
They intend to build a new building on the property that's the subject of this special use. Remember that there is an existing special use for the east half of the property where the existing building is. This special use is for the west half where there are no improvements.
Which street are we talking about again?
I'm.
Commerce.
Thirteenth Street, Commerce.
Well, thirteenth, I can understand.
Thirteenth.
Now where, where are these?
They, they run on the perimeter on the south and on the, the east.
You see Commerce up there, it's labeled.
Yeah, I got that.
And then Yorktown, I think he's pointing at it right now, is right to the east. And we've gone over our future plans for Yorktown between Central and thirteenth street with the college. I think they have an understanding of what our plans are for that. Now, again, I'm not, you know, can't speak to the financing or any of that aspect of it, but I think they understand what we're trying to achieve there with Yorktown.
Now you're saying to have them approved or completed?
Personally, I would like it to be completed prior to the building being, you know, I mean, that's a recommendation that the council could agree with.
I don't.
How many years would that take? That's my question on that.
I would feel more comfortable, go ahead Les.
The road project would take a few months in design and probably six or eight months in construction. So it's, you know, likely looking at, at least a year from now if, if the trigger were pulled today.
I think it'd be maybe just as sensible to say that, that prior to approving this special use, that it'd be accompanied with an agreement by the city and by the college that addresses these infrastructure improvements that are inherent to the expansion of, of the grounds, doubling of the grounds. So I think that seems reasonable to me and, and, you know, you know, it seems a bit kicking the can down the road. I mean, it may, it may take a couple of months for that to occur to get this special use back onto council. If that indeed is the case, can we not make that recommendation? That we put the two entities together to agree to terms and provisions of, of such road improvements and left turn lanes, right turn lanes?
I think we were talking about addressing some of these things with the plat, you know, and you can comment.
Correct. You, you remember that you approved the plat at the last meeting? That's now being held pending satisfactory petitions for improvements. Again, there's some work going on there between the college and the, the city attorney. It's a work in progress.
Okay.
And is there a timeframe for when the college would have their facility completed?
Please do come forward.
The timeline that we're facing with the school district is that we need to be out of that building by the summer of two thousand and twenty. Their, their demolition timeline identifies, I think, that they're going to start demolition of the wing that we're in in May of two thousand and twenty, so they can start to build a parking lot. And our goal is to be, is for parts of our folks to be out of that building even before that. We have a very constricted timeline in order to make that happen. And my understanding is that for us to be able to meet that timeline, we really have to start some demolition and some interior construction quite quickly. So I, my concern would be if, if there's an intention that road improvements have to be completed before we can do any work on that building, then, then we're going to impair the school district's ability to get their work done potentially as well, because we won't be able to get out of our space in time.
Do you agree that an agreement could be crafted such that the timing of improvements be put together in a, in a, in a framework that would be amenable to the city and amenable to your schedule? I mean, is that unreasonable?
I, I frankly am not the one that can approve that or make that, you know, make that happen. It's my board that has to do that. But what I can tell you is that we're at a point where we need to know what we need to do so we can start to have those discussions and try and move forward. And I know my board is positioned and poised to do that. We would have those discussions with, you know, our architect and our legal counsel and the city's folks as well. But, you know, our board would need to be involved in that. And I think we're under the, you know, the impression that, that that's going to be part of what we need to, you know, to agree to is some sort of road improvement to be able to move forward.
All right. I, I guess I'd like to make that condition that there, the two parties, and then not that, you know, I think it's, it's only reasonable that the two parties generate an agreement, a developers type agreement that looks at the timing of when such improvements get made. I think for sure there's, there would be some left turn lanes. I'm not the, the traffic engineer, but certainly some folks would, would recommend left turn lanes on thirteenth at some point in time, you know. And the timing of the other improvements that were mentioned on, you know, Yorktown or, or Commerce Street. I do think having multiple points of access for emergency as well as, you know, you know, just the overall ease of getting in and out of the college would, would make sense and benefit them and benefit our community. So I think it, there's a reasonable request there. And I, I don't know if you guys tend to agree. And it might get the, the project moving forward.
I, I agree. I think that's very fair. I think it allows it to happen in the timeframe that's needed and can allow it to move forward.
Besides that, Lance, do you think you have what the, the planning commission's response to the mayor was after they went over all those things? Do you think you have that clear or do you need them to go over it one more time in order to have it for the record? Because I think that's also important. It was asked to be considered. And I want to make sure we have a clear idea of what the, what the, what the planning commission. I don't know if you want to make a, a motion.
Well, certainly, we're going to ask for a motion here to move it forward.
Well, I, I think, you know, you're talking about the roads and stuff. There's, to me, there's a priority of those three situations. And first one is the thirteenth street improving it. Now, what, what improvements are, that's up in the air, whether it's a four lane or a five lane or left turn lanes and all that stuff. The second improvement is Commerce Street. I could see where people that's going to school there could come down that street and avoid thirteenth in order to get to the, to the campus. Then the last requirement is the, the street that's not there, whatever one that is. Yorktown, yeah. So, you know, I mean, how detailed do we want to get?
Well, I think, I think we, we developed the framework and let them sort out the details. I don't think the. I don't think the details are for us to figure out. I think, uh, you know, I, I would say that it wouldn't make sense to approve a plat that doesn't have sufficient details in it to, uh, get the improvements done that are needed eventually, maybe not to now, uh, and maybe it's, maybe it is now, I don't know. But those are the things that the city needs to work out. And I think, uh, you know, with, with the special use that they, both the special use and the plat should go together as, uh, one, uh, one hearing and, uh, get the two things with, with the, with the issues at hand, with the, the improvements that need to be made. Uh, it would make sense that you wouldn't, you wouldn't approve one without the other.
I guess I would just say that instead of dictating the terms of an agreement, I again would urge the planning commission to make specific, uh, you know, you could even say, uh, specific improvements, uh, would be required for the special use to be granted, um, in a, in a certain amount of time. Uh, if you want to say Thirteenth Street, I'm just telling you that hasn't probably not been contemplated as much as Yorktown and Commerce have been. Uh, but if you wanted to say to look at, uh, improvements to Thirteenth Street, Yorktown and Commerce, uh, prior to the, uh, CO being granted on the new building, I mean, I think that's the best we can do in terms of recommending infrastructure. I'm not saying to develop, you know, to, to say that we should create a developers agreement or anything like that. I'm asking that recommendations for infrastructure improvements are made, not, I'm not personally saying that we should say, direct the council to have a developers agreement or any other items. I'm just saying that we need to make recommendations for road improvements to occur and the mechanism as to which that happens isn't up to the planning commission, but the city council to decide, you know, how that should occur. Would you concur with that?
I think this all boils down to some platting conditions. And the, the million dollar question is what improvements and how much? And I don't, I don't think that any one of you have the information to know what those improvements are. We have a traffic report, we have a drainage report. But the, those, those improvements need to be, as, as Dr. Crowe pointed out, they, they need to be conveyed to the college. Here are the expectations. And here is a schedule that we expect them on. And, and then the, the monetary question comes up. How are those costs shared? It seems fairly obvious that there's not the typical fifty-fifty petition here between the college property and the adjacent property owner. The adjacent property is undeveloped. So there, there's a lot of things that need to be worked out between the college board, the city council, the city attorney as far as petitions for improvements, and this, the college's engineer and the city staff on just what those improvements are.
You made a comment about the property that's, that's, uh, empty or whatever you want to call it. Um, by putting in, say, improvements on the Thirteenth Street and all those other roads greatly increase his property value, so I don't think he needs to be left out in the side street.
Just would rather not get into the.
I know, but I'm just bringing out that, some of the discussion items.
I think we go back to that we think infrastructure improvements are needed. If you want to get a specific, we can work out the details, but I think it's important to say what infrastructure improvements associated with the special use are needed.
Yeah. I, I, I think we understand and I, that's, I think that's what my intention is, some sort of agreement that, uh, that they work out. Um, the timing of, of when that occurs, who pays for what, and oftentimes that's in a form of a development agreement, but however, whatever mechanism it is they so choose, uh, I just, that would be my recommendation as we move forward for the, uh, the street improvements, which are obviously very costly.
And take a while.
And contentious. So.
I, I just don't think that they, all the street improvements need to be done before they can make your improvements. They can be done together or somehow.
I, I think that's fair. I, I didn't infer that, I'm sorry. I was trying to say simultaneously, prior to the CO on that one building, I think is simultaneously, you know?
A certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, I misunderstood that then.
Okay.
Has everybody had enough information to digest this case?
Yep.
Fire hose.
Are there any, any other experts that we wish to hear from?
Well, what are, we need to discuss on what we're going to do before we, uh, make a motion on what we're going to do. A little more detailed, sorry, not more detailed, but focused. So, go ahead, Kevin.
Well, I think it's, it seems reasonable that they're all, they're all working towards, you know, getting a, a plat approved and a special use approved. These, this item that seems to be left off the table of discussion or maybe not fully addressed, needs to be addressed. And I think that's, that's the crux of our situation here. And we need to look at, uh, you know, preparing a, 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 an agreement of such that, uh, addresses the construction of, of Yorktown and Commerce, and I think even Thirteenth Street, because that's where, it's an arterial street, that's where the traffic is presently coming from. And that may be the thing that needs to happen first. It may not be, but, you know, that's not for us to decide, that's for the, the engineers and the, and the planners of record to figure that all out.
So we add Thirteenth to this?
I think so.
What's this on? Where's that at?
Now, this is from.
Oh, okay. All right. I got that right here. Yep.
Do we need to, do we need to go through the, which, which ones we agree with or which ones we don't agree with?
I don't, I don't think we have to on this, do we?
Well, I just went back through the, from the minutes from city council meeting on September eleventh, and a motion was made and seconded to adopt the findings and factors and recommendations of the Andover Planning Commission to adopt an ordinance approving special use case SU dash two, uh, two zero one eight dash zero two. And it said conditioned upon successful platting within one year. So the city council was all for it. The mayor is the one who vetoed it. Now, it appears that what we, I think we could do is send it back to him with the condition that there needs to be, uh, recommendations for infrastructure improvements specifically on the streets that need to be done, and I think concurrently with the construction or the improvements made by BCC. And I think, am I wrong or could we just do that?
I think what I feel here is apprehension on both parties. The, the college board is, is apprehensive to start a project before they know what the requirements of that project are. The city council is, or the mayor is apprehensive to allow a land use before he knows what the improvements are that will come with that land use. It's the chicken and the egg, and in my mind, it's the platting process that brings that all together. The plat is not just a drawing with some lines and simple signatures on it. There's the whole improvement process, which could mean petitions for improvements, or it could mean installation of improvements upfront. But, but I, I see those two opposing viewpoints there that conflict, that neither wants to make a move before they're sure of their position.
Well, it looks like we'll just help him make the decision. Just, uh, it seems a little unorthodox, but, uh.
Is this sufficient here? If we add Thirteenth Street?
I think, I think so.
Do you mind going over those responses to the mayor? Cause I think that's going to be critical, cause if we don't make responses, then he's going to say, no one responded to what I said. And I think that's a good conclusion.
That's why I asked my question.
But I just want to make sure we have those and then we can add the two conditions or, uh, we'll get to the conditions at the end of making those conclusions.
Thank you.
Factors you're talking about?
I knew it was a good reason I took some notes here. Um, I, you know, looking at my notes, uh, when we reviewed factor six, I tend to agree and relate with his concerns, and I think that's what we've been talking largely about here in the last few minutes.
Yep.
Uh, is there a consensus with that agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
We have all of us saying yes.
Yep.
All right. Item number, factor number seven.
Yes.
And this is due at the plat.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's, it's, uh, we need to get this thing platted, is what it boils down to.
Within the next twelve months.
Within the next twelve months, so we agree to that?
Yes.
Yes.
Heard everybody say yes, so there's.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
And then factor number nine. I think, I think there's probably suitable lands elsewhere in this community, but, uh, you know, this is where they're positioned right now, and for them to pick up and move, uh, would be a challenge.
Yeah, and their current land, uh, pardon me, their current building doesn't have the space.
Correct.
Yep.
So while there may be other lands available, I think it's somewhat moot.
Yep.
In the fact that there's, uh, you know, they're, they're residing there functionally, and they're looking to make improvements.
And if this was a high school, that would be a different situation. This is a community college, so conflict of where it's at is not as great as if it was a high school.
So if we want to.
So we disagree with his.
If we want to say, I mean, I might put, I might say it's not applicable for this situation, uh, as, as far as a finding.
Okay.
So we're going to, we're going to strike that one from a finding. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Agree.
Flynn, do you agree?
Yep. Yes.
I thought I already said so.
Okay, good. Well, it's good to get confirmation. Okay, factor eleven, property does not have suitable, uh, not suitable for current zoning, and I think, I think that's debatable. I could somewhat agree with him, but I think the fact of the matter is they've been there operating for.
And I think there's a tie between industrial training and schooling.
Certainly, there is.
I think there's a connection there.
Especially.
Well, another thing is that the, it's not exactly in the middle.
Exactly.
On a corner.
Right.
And so.
So do we want to strike that one as a, as a reason?
I think so.
Yes, I think so too.
Would agree.
So we're striking that as a reasoning for approval or denial or whatever we come up with here. Factor twelve, planning staff agreed that the approval of the zoning request would be detrimental to effect, uh, the property and, with increased traffic. And I don't think we're overlooking it now. We are definitely, we're addressing that with item number six. So, uh.
We agree with his.
We agree with his, which again, I think from a support, um, it, you know, it doesn't necess, if we say it, that we need more improvements, we're, we're saying that's a condition of twelve.
Well, any, any development, whether it's industrial or the college going in out there, is going to cause more traffic and sometime that's going to have, road is going to have to improve.
Sure.
That's just.
It's nature of development.
I've been here since nineteen eighty and there's been a lot of changes to Andover.
Yeah. So I, I, do you guys want to weigh on then that and tell me what your thoughts are?
Well, I think we're addressing it by saying that there needs to be improvements, infrastructure improvements.
Yep. Yeah. I, I wrote that I, I agree and we're addressing it.
All right. That's what we're going to say, we agree that there needs to be improvements made. Thirteen. And summary. And this was in regards to how we look at special uses and how we apply that, I think.
That is a good point. But I think in this case, it's not as, uh.
I don't think we should use it as one of our factors.
Yes.
I would, I would beg you to go back to the, the intent of every zoning district in the book and find one that lends itself to a community college as a special use. I've read them, I've read them all. It's just not contemplated.
Yeah. So we're left to figure it out on our own.
The, the central shopping district says college classes. Those regulations go back to the nineteen seventies when, when the college may have offered a course in a, in a, a strip mall somewhere. But it's become a much bigger presence. You know, there are three or four thousand students out there. You wouldn't expect that to be in a shopping mall, would you?
No.
Not unless it took up the whole shopping mall, bigger than what we have.
Hopefully, whenever we revise these codes, we can address that more sufficiently. So I think, uh, for our purposes, it's not helpful to either address, um, this item. You know, I'm looking for some comments. You guys think?
I, I would agree. It's kind of neither here nor there on this one.
So. I think we, I think we said yes last time and, and so I think we ought to say not applicable.
Yep. And a.
And that brings us to fourteen. And this is in reference to the comprehensive plan, very much like the last question. However, it's debatable, uh, since it's not spelled out that it's Butler County Community College, who is a, who has a presence here in our community. I just, uh.
That's a shortfall in the comprehensive plan.
It, it was a little bit, uh, it needed to be more robust with that topic.
Definitely.
And so I don't, with that, I don't think we can lean on it for guidance. Uh, so I think we ought to throw that out. And would everybody tend to?
Yes.
Would concur.
Yeah. And that brings us to the, the most exciting one, weighing all of the things. What weight do we give the improvements, uh, or versus the hardship? So we got the, the scale. And we're looking for the gain of the public safety and general welfare outweighed by the.
I like the tie between the high school and the community college. I think that's a plus.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if there's, if there's cooperations, yeah.
There's two elements. There's our high school kids attending this community college, and then there's, uh, the people out and working in the real world attending this community college, and they come from Cedric and Butler and.
Wherever.
Brazil and, you know. Um, so that, I mean, we're, this is a wide scope. It's not just one factor where we can, or what do you want to call it?
I think if, I mean, this, if, if these provisions that we're talking about for improvements could be addressed, I think there is a lot of, uh, gain to the, you know, public welfare.
The value outweighs it.
If we don't have traffic improvements, there could be accidents, increased accidents, increased, uh, issues of connectivity in the future, and, and so I think, uh, they need to go hand in hand together and.
Yeah. Which is what we're driving at, so I, yeah, I agree completely.
Yeah. One of the things we, you know, normally when we approve something and stuff like that, we don't, unless it's a, uh, development and we're putting in the streets and everything, we don't discuss the need to improve the road when we approve something for this area or something from that area, because the natural growth. or something from that area because the natural growth and traffic requires that.
I think the, the other mitigating factor is, is those, those residences or those, those infrastructure uh tend to pay for themselves, whereas this does the opposite. And uh, well, that may not be a popular thing to say, is the reality is that they're not gonna-
But by improving these streets and doing a lot of things may get more of those empty areas and improved and, and populated.
And I think it could be a very, a good thing for the college as well.
Yeah, oh definitely.
All right. So we've, I think we've successfully uh brought our concerns forward. So we have to summarize six, seven, twelve and, and uh-
Seventeen.
To a degree seventeen with uh, with conditions. Uh, we all agree that that is the case and we can share that with the council.
Six, twelve, seventeen with conditions.
Correct.
And seven. Yeah, did you say seven?
Six, seven, twelve, seventeen.
And I think the conditions are what we've been talking about, plating within a year. Uh, we've been talking about improvements to, to uh the roads being secured in one mech- mechanism or another. Um, and I think any other improvements that involve, you know, health and safety, whether it be water, sewer uh items as well, should be looked at and agreed upon by the two parties. Prior to approval of the special use, would you, wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't make sense that you would approve the special use without those conditions being met because that's what we're saying is we think that those things go hand in hand.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that what I'm hearing everybody say or is it just me just barking up here?
No, I, I agree with that.
Okay. All right, with that, look for a motion?
I think the chairman, you have this knowledge in hand. I would suggest you make the motion.
Okay. I think Mr. Israel is over here figuring something out.
Oh, I'm just writing. I like the writing.
Well, that's fine too.
We normally don't have the chairman make the motion.
That's right. A lot of times I, I don't make the motion, but you know, if you'd like.
Wouldn't mind you making the motion.
All right.
Chairman.
I'm, I move that we um require that with the approval of the special use, that provisions be made for public infrastructure improvements, including but not limited to Commerce Street, Yorktown, Thirteenth Street, water and sewer improvements, that those be uh agreed upon by both city council and Butler County Community College as owners of the, of the present property.
I'll second it.
And no, I, I forgot to, so just a minute, one more element and that was that we have the plat recorded within a year and that will suffice uh for addressing all these conditions.
I think you've given the council good direction here. If they need to continue any of it, these are good recommendations in my opinion and we can go forward.
I think a motion is on the table.
I second that uh with added, added statements.
A motion by Brian Lindebak, a second by Lynn Heath. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Same side? And motion passes. Okay.
Good job, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, looking for a motion to recess.
Yeah.
Your planning commission.
I so move.
I second it.
And let these, let these gentlemen and ladies get the bout and we take a little break.
Yeah, well, I, I'd like a drink of water, so I think uh, take, we should motion to uh recess for five minutes.
Make a motion to recess for five minutes.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I thought we already did that, though.
Gone. Not officially.
Not officially.
You, you and I did. We didn't include the others.
Did we beat that?
He went up, to me, went a little bit too far. He brought up some good points.
Yeah, yeah, he did.
But he did that.
Well, he was, he was trying to make a point.
Oh, he, he, he's right. You know.
Desk is coming apart.
Thoroughly.
Yep.
I was gonna say the way it was flying, I was-
Over, in the finance office college, I just appreciate you. Third, this is what you did.
Well, you're more than welcome.
Been doing this, I've been doing this for a while.
No, no.
Appreciate your input.
There's a lot of it, problems, you know.
Well, I think we can conclude.
You betcha. Thank you. Okay.
You know, I, I understand this is a very tricky thing that the, the school is only a piece. They're looking at building on the property. Who's gonna own the building? BCC or is it gonna be the property owner? That building was there in our home, that property. So, Ray Young was there a long time, did he own the building?
Well, they were gone for a long time too.
I mean, that's, that's quite the history and I just, you know.
Well, I think-
I just know the answer, but I didn't want to ask those questions here in front of everybody else because they're, but yeah, it's, you know, I've got-
They might, they might.
They may have. But, you know, I've got friends who live in Central Academy just outside from their family. So the third case you go to Andover schools and not pay taxes.
But they are still paying the school taxes.
They are paying the school taxes.
And that's the majority of our taxes.
Yeah, but I, I live in Andover. I have no kids in Andover, so I'm paying the school taxes. I'm paying for Butler Community College.
My grandkids are at my school.
So.
I know.
But I look at it as, okay, it's close for me to work. It's a safe community. I like the things that Andover does. I love the state. Yeah. It less? So Vornado is looking at expanding their warehouse. Has anything come?
Yes.
Okay.
So on the next site planning review committee, Jim.
Okay, will it come to planning commit, to us? Won't come to us at all?
No change in uh-
No change in funding.
Yep.
All ready to class?
I hope they, I hope they really get on them though about parking, about the way the parking's set up.
This is our sense story. This is the existing college.
The college, the college does own the properties now. Okay. Okay.
We didn't want to ask, we wanted to ask.
Well, you know, looking at the parking lots at Vornado, they are not set up to code today, for today. So anything that they do in adding to the facility, does that mean that the parking lots will have to be looked at again or they grandfathered in?
Oh, probably not. They're, they're showing some unloading docks.
Yeah. So that's where commerce needs, I mean, we have the streets back there behind us, but we don't have, we got a dirt road.
And then there will be the fire, the required fire lanes for- Here's one here. This one?
Yeah, I know the new structure is-
Kinda goes like this. Yeah. Man, exactly right. So it's doing that and I know there's drive in, drive in like that.
It's actually, it's looped.
It's looping around? I, I put it in there now.
The driveway approach here and here, so that a semi can drive in here, loop around and then back up to the dock.
Okay. So one of the things they had me do is they had me look at duplicating the office space. We're not gonna do that.
Did we get this motion approved? I don't think we did. We didn't, we didn't get this motion approved, did we?
But this right here, like-
To recess. We got started to.
Yeah, we have to.
Eat all the mayor's mince. Eat all the mayor's mint. I presume that's it.
You're probably right.
To tell him thanks.
But tell them we need more trees and more shrubs, so the site planning committee needs to hold their feet to the fire.
Well done.
Yeah? Okay, thanks. It was a little-
Reconvene?
Yes, let's, let's get this done. Yeah, there's a little molding clay right there. Didn't know where you were gonna get at the end. Holy cow. Yeah.
It's only nine o'clock.
That's all?
Where's our audience? Oh, God, look at that.
Couple lone wolves back there.
No, I mean, the only thing I'd say is look on the thing that everyone's watching, but it's uh without actually speaking to someone, it's hard to really glean a whole lot from that. So.
What are you calling that?
Just the history on the Butler County College.
Oh.
And I know at one point it used to be called Co- of Storage, but is that right?
One, I don't think that one was. There's another one that's down closer to the west.
It's in front of.
Yeah, more across the street from it. They don't want to hear anymore?
I think we're ready.
ICS?
Oh, okay.
I think, I think our five minutes is up.
They moved, yeah. Okay. Let me see if I can put my books back together again here.
So we're gonna only open this to recess the, uh convene the board of zoning appeals just to explain the fact that this case is being re-advertised.
Push forward.
Yeah, please do. I don't know that we ever turned this off. Okay. We'll reconvene. Yeah, looking for a motion. I don't think we completed our motion to recess planning commission and convene as board of zoning appeals. Uh, would someone like to move?
Make the motion to recess the planning commission and convene the board of zoning appeals.
I second it.
All right, we have a, a motion by Mr. Israel and a, a second by Mr. Schnaber. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Uh, this case is BZAV two thousand eighteen dash zero five. It's a public hearing on application filed by Greg Reeves of six thirty-five South Verna Avenue, Andover, Kansas. And maybe I, before I get into all the details of this case, uh due to a lack of advertising and publication on this hearing, we were gonna, we're going to have to continue this item on to the November twentieth uh two thousand eighteen meeting. So uh I think this is our notice to the public that if you want to come talk about that case um that we just talked about at six three five South Verna Avenue, please come to that meeting uh and then we'll, we'll be able to discuss that then. Um, so given that notice, I'll ask that someone motion to convene the, uh adjourn the uh board of zoning appeals and reconvene the planning commission.
I'll make a motion, I'll make, oh.
Forgive me. I'll make a motion that we adjourn the board of zoning appeals and reconvene the planning commission.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All righty, that gets us on to the Prairie Point. Item number seven, the review and acceptance of Prairie Point at Cornerstone Second Edition Final P U D P. Uh, this item was heard at the subdivision committee and reviewed uh with the proposed final planned unit development plan. And uh, you know, I know that uh there were a few minor details that were discussed that need to be corrected and then some documentation that needed to be submitted. Less was that done to your satisfaction?
All of the conditions uh that were part of the subdivision committee's approval have been complied with.
Okay.
Wonder what is that, that's just-
That's hard to look at.
Yeah, see, they changed the street names.
Yeah. And uh-
But is it still the same street name going each way on the courts? Sorry.
That is allowed because it's, it continues through the street.
Okay.
What's not allowed is to repeat the name of the street, like uh this was Cobblestone Street is the loop that connects from, you're trying me on names here, from Keystone over to one fifty-ninth Street was Cobblestone Street and the method over in Wichita is that every cul-de-sac that comes off of a street carries the street's name. Our addressing policy does not recognize that, so each street has to have an independent name.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions of the agent or applicant? If not, uh we won't necessarily need to have them come up unless they want to.
Not here.
All right.
None.
All right, we just achieved our first line of efficiency in government. All right. Anyone wish to move to approve or deny or modify?
So chairman, I move that we accept the Prairie Point at Cornerstone Second Edition Final Planned Unit Development Plan.
Second that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Schnaber and a uh second by Mr. Israel. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item number eight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is the discussion of our unified development manual and consider this uh setting a public hearing on November twentieth two thousand eighteen and consider adoption of these new regulations. And I hope we have some more specific words in some of these regulations to make our lives a little easier up here. All right.
There you go.
We now have a green light.
There you are.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, um, we want to keep this as brief as possible.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, we wanna keep this as brief as possible. You've been here quite a while. It's my understanding that you have a printout and have seen the information. And what I would stress to you is that the purpose of this is to, um, keep you in the loop of information that has gone to the governing body. For example, this is, um, directly related to information to, provided to the, um, uh, at a council workshop. So they've seen it, had this information, provided input to us, and you're seeing that particular information on it. Um, what we're gonna look at here in the slides is just the significant changes. The major changes that have occurred to the existing regulations. Uh, we've talked about this before of re- reorganizing, um, all these elements into the Unified Development Manual. Um, concentrate on plain English. And definitely getting this more user-friendly, web-based. And we've gone to considerable effort to develop, um, pictures and tables to make things, um, easy to use the document on it. We were fortunate, the Raleigh, North Carolina provided, um, very good examples to work with. And just make note of the concept, you can see it up there in the upper right, the flipping book. And that's one of the options, um, the main option that'll be looked at to get this document up and running online. I'd also point out, and this was mentioned to, uh, the council, that if you go to their website and look a little bit deeper into it, in two thousand fifteen, um, I, I was looking at it and there was at least a dozen, if not sixteen revisions, that they had made. So the, the concept is, this is a work in process. It's intended to be a document that you kinda sort out and, and work through some things to find out what's gonna work. And I'm gonna be real interested, you know, what, what, one of the cases you had this evening, of course, where does a college campus fit in on it? That might be something, we, we, we've not talked about that specifically. So that might be something to talk about on it. But anyway, it's a, it's a living document and it's gonna change over time. Um, we've talked about this coordinating with current plans and you can see those there's. But the two main things, the biggest changes in the regulations are the last two items there. Uh, Reed versus Gilbert, the court case. You now have a separate Article Eight instead of Article Seven that addresses signage, a complete rewrite of it due to that court case. And then you can see the list of a minimum of six items there that just changes, that have occurred since the original, um, regulations were done on it. Uh, what about the specific, uh, some related to zoning? Keep in mind that there are no changes to existing boundaries on it. But where some of the changes have occurred is in the, the names of things. And we're gonna look more closely at these, but three zones eliminated and two new zones added. All intended to give clarification. So you can see here in, in this, um, there, there's a section in, in the new regulations that actually talks about the intent of each of the zones on it. And you can see here the, the R-six and, um, manufactured home subdivision eliminated, never used on it. Flood plane, as we've talked about, is being taken out of the zoning and it'll be a standalone ordinance. A new zone, the, um, mixed neighborhood transition, mixed-use zoning district. You can see all those items there that are intended to improve, you know, walkability and just the livability on it. And this will be something in your toolbag that you'll be able to utilize. And, you know, this, this comes from the comprehensive plan of making the community more walkable on it, providing for mixed use on it. So it'll be interesting, the projects you get that will take on this, um, mixed use benefit. B-five, that was, you know, working with an existing district, but expanding it and getting it to become more of a mixed use to allow for things that are gonna come up upon the four hundred corridor for you.
I have one question.
Yes.
On, uh, the residential classes, do we, do we have a duplex equivalent on zoning class?
We go back to it here.
And if not, should we, should we have one?
It's multifamily.
Well, yeah, it's, it's included and Les, make sure I'm correct in here.
MF-one, I think.
Well, definitely in the multifamily. Um, but Les, I thought we had other provision for it in, in one other.
The MF-one district is for all of those attached, whether it be.
Three-plex.
Two, three, four, eight.
Eight even.
Attached.
Okay.
More of, more of a townhouse than an apartment.
Gotcha.
There's, there are some nuances in definition that, that a townhouse has to be vertically separated from its neighbor only, whereas an apartment can be either vertically or horizontally separated from its neighbor.
Only reason I brought that up is I almost wondered if we oughta have some, one more class in there that would be more of just the traditional duplex. Because I think there's.
More and more, more and more, we see the developers come back to us and say, that really doesn't work. We need more flexibility to be able to do one, two, three, five attached instead of being fixed at two or then jump up to an apartment.
My only, my only comment here, and, and it would be that, you know, if you're a neighbor of our, you know, let's say you're SF-two next door and, uh, there's a significant difference from having two neighbors to having five neighbors. You know, the, in a co- attached dwelling unit. And it, it could be challenging at times to get that zoning cl- class approved based on that. And that's the only reason I might suggest that we have a, just a duplex zoning or whatever it may be, uh, to, to, if that's all someone wants to do, we don't need to have a whole bunch of provisions that have a protective overlay that limit it down to that.
I think the key that you're looking for there, Brian, is the lot size requirements. That in order to have a duplex, it requires more space. So for instance, I, I don't have it in front of me here, but it's four thousand square feet per dwelling unit as a duplex. Where if it was a townhouse, it's much less than that. It's maybe three thousand. And those are the things that you take care of with plating.
Yeah, I guess there's some infill lots, as I could imagine, that could be redeveloped. And you would probably apply for this type of zoning to do that infill. And, you know, to tell the neighbors, oh, I'm just doing a duplex, you know, don't, just trust me. You know, I'm doing a duplex. I, that's all I'm getting at, is that it could, it could make things a little bit harder for us up here as a bench to get that approved. And, and if that's all they wanna do is just duplex, so be it. Um, and I'm not, those are my only comments there, and I'll just leave it at that. And if, if you feel strongly that we don't need it, that's fine.
We need to be able to make that restriction.
Yeah. Cause I know that there's gonna be lots that are gonna be well-suited for duplex, but may not be as suited for a three-plex or four-plex, um, or a townhouse as it may. Maybe.
Yeah, I know, might've been the same thing.
So anyways, that, that's my only thoughts on that. And I think it's, it could be, it could be better to have one more class in there.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm studying what, if, if you look at the table there, the R-three, initially, I mean, it stayed single-family attached in two, three, and four-family dwellings. That was, that was R-three. Now I'm gonna go back and look at the R-two. And let's see here.
R-two is single-family only.
It's only single fam- yeah.
Just single-family.
So you can see.
It's progressing the same. It's just, do we need to have that additional classification?
Right, that's what I wanted to, to, to get a look at on it. You know, I'm, I'm familiar with that. I see a lot of zoning cases in, in Wichita for the infill issue. But, you know, this is your document.
Yeah.
So.
I, I, I think it'd be good. And I, it's just, if we don't use it that often, we can certainly delete it someday in the future, but I.
Okay, we restrict the, does this two duplexes?
By protective overlay, you can put whatever restriction you deem fit.
But with a protective overlay, you open up the, the basket of, well, I want this, I want this. And so you start, well, you, you start, you know.
Protective overlay is only more restrictive.
Right, but you, a neighbor might say, well, I want, you know, an eight-foot screening wall to go with that. Or, you know, it just opens up the basket of, you know, since the protective overlay's on the table, I want this, this, and that. And it may be appropriate for that case, but, you know, just, it just makes it a little more challenging at times. And that's all I'm, my point here is that if it, if we, if we see a lot of duplexes, which I do see a lot of duplexes in our community, maybe it, maybe we should just have a class for that.
Well, I'm curious, how, have you had some cases? Individual duplex things, are, are we talking, are they infill?
We had an infill one just here recently in a, in a residential neighborhood. And we have a whole, we have a whole duplex community near, you know, that was recently approved. I say recent, maybe twenty-fourteen, that was approved. And I, I do see that, you know, as, they seem to be a, a popular thing in our surrounding community right now is to, to fill in with duplexes cause they're relatively easy to get built, you know, from a code permit standpoint.
We have one at, going in across from the Prairie Creek subdivision that's gonna be, you know, February forty-eighth. I mean, there's, it's gonna be a, now I'm not, you know, I don't know what, but we do have a lot that are popping up here and there.
Well, let's, cause, uh, you know, I can give you specifics, specific examples from Wichita on it. They look at these routinely on it. But what it brings though with it is a concern from neighbors. And there was enough concern there to establish a committee to look into it, of which it's gone on for at least a year and a half. And there's been, it's, there's that much discussion on it. And there's that much discussion at the planning commission level is, is this what you want in your community?
What was the concern?
Oh, there's all sorts of concerns. One is, or there's setback questions, there's pave versus gravel on it.
Just related to duplex.
Just related to duplex. Um, street increased, um, traffic, um, uh, requirements for off-road, off-street parking on it. I know I have a personal bias, is I wanna make sure there's two minimum. I drive by one every day where there's three vehicles out in the street. And it's a single duplex.
I think the biggest thing I think of is, is, you know, the difference in getting a building permit. There's a substantial, if you look at the universe, you know, the, the building, international building code, you know, there's a lot higher standards for getting three, three dwelling units versus, you know, duplex. And so I think with that in mind, you, you're kinda dovetailing the two together. And I think it could be a beneficial thing, you know. Uh, so I don't know, those.
Well, the, the, the benefits are you're, um, using existing infrastructure. So there's, there's cost savings to the community at large for things like that, especially with streets and utilities on it. Increased density, is that something that Andover, I mean, that's was one of the reasons for the mixed use. But do you see increased density relative to single-family adjacency as a positive thing moving forward? Now, that's the discussion.
Can I offer?
And that's, that's why I'm concerned about is it, you know, to have a duplex next door isn't as big a deal to some as having a four-plex next door, which becomes almost like a little apartment complex. And I think that, that's to me why we oughta throw in the duplex zoning. And, and I don't think it'd probably be too hard to craft that language that would go with that and get that in there.
Except. Okay, may I offer, Les touched on the changes in, uh, the differences in required lot size. The two-family lot size in MF-one requires ten thousand square feet, whereas a single-family attached or townhouse is three thousand per unit with a minimum of ten thousand square feet. So you can put a duplex on just four thousand per unit or eight thousand square feet. In the MX-R, it's for a two-family dwelling, four thousand per unit, square feet per unit, whereas a single-family attached townhouse is three thousand per unit with a minimum of ten thousand square foot lot. MX-N allows two families. Um, and there, it's single-family, two-family dwelling, and group homes are all five thousand per unit. There are also specific issues addressed for the bulk regulations, um, the setbacks. So we addressed two-family units, we don't use the word duplex apparently in, in Andover.
Well, sure.
But address them specifically in the zones where they're allowed through setbacks and lot sizes as opposed to creating a specific zone for each duplex that might happen.
Yeah, I, I, I'm okay with that. I just think there's a perception that, you know, even though the lot size may be limit, may lim- physically limit the ability to put a, um, it's just the perception when you advertise a case that you've got multifamily one. You know, yeah, I, I, you know, a lot of people don't, won't read the code. Obviously, it's gonna be there, so it's easier to understand, but, you know, there, I just think, I'm.
Well, I'm, I'm, Les, help me out, but I'm recalling, we, we went to the two-family just to relate to codes.
Exactly.
That that was the benefit. So our recommendation would be, don't get into the terminology of duplex.
Well, sure.
Stay with two-family to, so that, again, this whole thing, one of the benefits is we're trying to sync up with your building codes in terms of definitions and things. Les, you got any further insights? I mean, you've seen all these cases come along and, um, you know, you, you guys see how Andover's developed over time. A lot of you guys have, have the wisdom of seeing that, so you've been there, done that. If we need to get this in here to make your job easier, then we should.
Brian, the current zone, the R-three allows anything from single-family up to four attached dwelling units.
Yeah.
I guess I didn't see any, any big distinction between four and five or, or four and eight.
Yeah.
But what we've used in the past is that protective overlay or a planned unit development, if we wanted to limit it, and there are a couple of PUDs.
Yeah.
That limit multifamily.
I know which ones we are, yeah.
Two-family units.
Yeah, I, I just think, just.
And we can still do that.
I just think it might say.
Still do that.
We could still do that, but if we wanna just kinda nip the tail ahead of time, I, I, I think it'd be easier just to have a class for itself.
Myself, I would rather look at it on a case-by-case basis, so you can take into consideration the context around it. If indeed you're, you're butted up to a single-family neighborhood, maybe that's when you pull out that protective overlay card and say, now, those that abut a single-family need to be two-family units only.
Yes. And, yeah.
Rather than limit a developer to, these lots are duplexes only.
No, I, I guess I'm saying, I think they can still, we can still have the, the M-one or M-eight, uh, MH-one classification. We just add one in there, so they can choose if they wanna go to MH-one or they say, hey.
But what I hear is that it's, it's hard to pick that in advance.
Oh.
For the developer.
See, I think, I would think they would be doing a lot of that up in, in advance just because of the financing of doing a duplex versus, you know, you get into sprinkling a three-family phone or, or home or a four-family.
Right, right.
It's a very costly, quick. It's a very costly, quick. And so I think that economics would have been figured out possibly in advance, but.
It's something to ponder.
Well, I think we have a, we have a lesson about to ponder it.
Well, you know, I'm, my thought is, let's not wait till the public hearing to, to get this into further discussion. You know, general wisdom is you want the public hearing to be more of an explanation as opposed to revision.
Right.
On it. It makes it real tricky in motions and things, but, you know, do you want to wait until we get to the public hearing portion of it, or, you know, you've, you've got the, the body here that can make these decisions?
I would, I would just recommend, in my opinion, we ought to recommend that you work with Les to come, to determine if it's needed and if it's helpful. But I, I personally think it'd be needed and helpful. Uh, but you guys can work it out. And if you guys want to add that language, uh, to, to the code.
One thing we don't want is to have that be a general multifamily and this, and there's four duplex, duplexes, I say, and then somebody else comes in on the last lot and wants to put in a fourplex. Uh, that, that's what I think is, is a, a concern. We don't want, uh, an area that has multifamily and each lot can determine what they want to put in. Is that possible?
Well, I think what I've heard, uh, from Foster is that they're, they're, they've designed that already into the code. It's just based on lot size, so. Is that not right? It's based on lot size. So if your lot is confined to, let's say it's a 12,000 square foot lot, you're not gonna be able to put a three-family dwelling unit on there. You're gonna be stuck with a two-family dwelling. But, but if you so, I mean, but if you wanted just a little extra land, uh, you could still put that two-family on there, but. Um, I, I just think there's a, a perception thing that goes along with the zoning code and, um, as much as that seems like it shouldn't be a big deal, it can become a really big deal when you start talking about your neighbors putting in a multifamily. Well, multifamily, that's the first thing people think of, multifamily, an apartment complex. And so then you've already alarmed someone and got them excited when they, if you said a twin home or whatever we want to call it. Uh, oh, it's a twin home? Oh, it's not a big deal. So I, I think it's something to consider. And if you guys don't feel strongly on it, I would think just put it in the, in these two, put it in the professionals' court and let them decide.
I mean, I would agree with Brian on this one is, is that there's a significant difference between two or three, four, you know, that there's a significant difference between the two. And that if it's designed to only be two-family home, then don't give an option that they could put a three or four, you know, based off of lot size.
Or buy two lots and put in a fourplex.
Well, yeah, that could be too.
Why don't, why don't you let us, we'll, we'll work with, with Les here, take a closer look at it. And, um, just so we can keep the ball rolling here, we'll respond quickly.
I appreciate that.
Cause we've got to get the document established to keep this in the, the chute going forward.
Sorry to derail your presentation.
No, not at all. No, that's why we're doing this. Um, we're fortunate to be able to do the presentation. We had, this wasn't originally part of the plan here, so this is good. Let me get back to, let's see. Uh, this just addresses, um, the arterial overlay as, as a, a new district. And this is to provide for flexibility. I'm gonna test something here. I don't want to care for that cursor there. Um, but you, you can see the idea is for flexibility so that on these particular Andover Road and Central Avenue is so that residential properties can upgrade to commercial or other uses on it. And thi- this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is what this came out of. And you can see all these items that you can be looking at, um, on a case-by-case basis for that. And again, it's provided to make it a little easier. And, and it makes it simpler, is it's the overlay. You don't have to come up with your own protective overlay. We've identified that, again, relative to the comprehensive plan. Um, this is just to let you know, really, the only change on your official zoning map is gonna be over on the left-hand side is we would update all of the, uh, district naming there. Okay, this is where we're getting to, uh, quite an effort here to get up to speed with technology and, and how people do things today. But the ones in red, we're gonna look at a little bit more closely. We've got some more detailed information on that. Um, and we want to look carefully at the findings and factors that you all weighed in on very carefully on it. Um, looking at the findings and factors, this is all intended to streamline your process here. You now, there's 17, you won't have the 17. And we've looked at that and got it down to 14 through a little bit of combination and, and nine of the factors are in the document for you, um, to use as your review tool. Five of those is staff will be, um, doing that for you. For example, um, staff will be answering this one. Does adequate public infrastructure, water, sewer, streets exist, or could it be provided in order to serve permitted uses under the chain zoning classification? Your discussion this evening would have been taken care of for you. In that staff would have looked more, you know, had caused to look more closely in that to answer that question. Now, I could keep going through these. For example, the second one is the issue of planning. Staff is gonna look at that and provide an answer to the planning commission on that issue. And then what that gets down to is the, the nine items that you'd be looking at relate more to the suitability. How does it relate to, to the neighborhood? What is its current, current zoning? But I want to make sure that we cover this well enough for you. Um, are there any questions related to the, the findings and factors that you might have thought about? Okay. Marx, any input on that from you?
Go through a couple of the things that went off. One, one thing that's gone is that suitability, um, discussion of whether that, you know, my, my person, you know, my personal view is that that's a very subjective thing to talk about suitability of land. If you're a developer and you think where you're at is what you need for your market, for us to turn around and start talking about, well, we think somewhere else is way more suitable for, for your thing. What's appropriate is, is it, is it appropriate zoning? Does it meet the comp plan and those factors? Then getting into our own subjective criteria on what's suitable. You know, my personal opinion was that was covered within the comp plan and the, uh, adjacent land and, you know, the compatibility issues.
I'd be curious what, what you've replaced with 17, because, I mean, 17 is very important. However, the way it's worded is, 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 it, it creates more questions in your mind, like, what am I reading here? Even though you know what you read, but you're like questioning, what did I just read? So.
The gist of the question is the same. It comes down to weighing those factors that support or oppose the change.
I'd be curious what you said.
It is not worded in such a way that it can be answered by yes or no.
Perfect.
Let, let me, I'll, I'll give it to you here.
Yeah.
It starts out, how would the potential loss in value or hardship imposed on the applicant compare to the relative gain to the public health, safety and welfare if there's a change from the current zone to the requested zone? So it's a how question. So, we, we, I mean, this took a lot of head scratching to simplify it, but, um, that was kind of the best way to get at it.
Figure out how to answer in the affirmative or the negative.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, sign regulations was, was a tough one to, uh, work on there. And really, if you want to remember one thing, just, it all comes down to coming up, um, you, you can't have anything that's content-based. That wiped out the first section of your existing signs because, the sign article, because that's how signs were, were classified, by their content. And that established all, how the categories for all the signs and everything. So that all was struck and therefore we had to rebuild it from there. If you have to redesign in order to know how to regulate it, it's probably content-based. So you have Article 8, and we're gonna talk more about these, but you can apply by time, place and manner. Time such as, how long should a sign be allowed to be on depending on the district that it's in? Place is you restrict the locations depending on the category of sign that we'll look at here. And the manner of it, size, shape, electronic message center, that kind of stuff. But let's look a little bit more at it. These are the categories that I identified on it. And quite a few of these weren't even considered back in the day on the original regulations. You know, air-activated signs, some are called the waving man. You, you've seen those, or a feather or a blade sign on it. So there's a lot of different types of advertising, but we had the categories for all of those to regulate it. Um, some, some specific things, signs six square feet or less are still exempt on it. Uh, billboards, roof signs, flashing, full motion, animated, still prohibited per, per the, um, old regulations as well. And you can read the rest of those, but to look specifically at the electronic message centers, um, having the bright list levels, uh, Lawrence, for example, uh, they spent, uh, it was over a year working just on their sign ordinance. And let's see, it was adopted in September of 2017. They, they have the, I'm getting ahead of myself. They use the 3.3 foot candles. Now, some of you are probably familiar with the term nits. Foot candles, we're finding out is a better way to do it and it's less cost to have the, uh, metering or testing on, on that as well. Auto dimming is kind of an industry standard now on it. And Les, I'm trying to figure out on existing signage, um, how are those gonna be treated relative to the dimming?
You have a 10-year amortization to come into.
Okay. It wasn't, I'm trying to remember some of the technology, whether they could update the sign, but I don't know if that's how it works. You want to answer that? Okay. Any questions? Don't hesitate to stop me.
The only question I would have is enforcement. I know that we've got a whole lot of good rules now. How are we gonna back those up with enforcement? And, uh, I think that's just as important as the rules themselves. And if we aren't enforcing the rules, it kind of is like, why do we have the rules?
We've got a, a slide that'll address that, but go ahead, Les, if you.
We've made a lot of efforts to ensure that these regulations are enforceable, that it's clear that everyone, including the applicant, knows what the rules are and how to conform. And provide for a method for permitting and regulation.
And do we have anything that's talking about penalties? Uh, what, what kinds of penalties go along with the enforcement? Uh, or is that just interpretive as well?
There's a whole section in there on how each one of these regulations can be, can be enforced at the administrative level and then into the municipal court level.
Okay.
You could see, in fact, this speaks directly to what we were just talking about here. There's a zoning permit, um, for signage. There's a separate sign permit on it for, uh, the zoning permit is for permanent signs. The sign permit, as you can see, is for hand-portable, short-term and temporary signs. Or in some cases, like we mentioned before, the six square feet, there's no permit at all for certain signs as well. Um, just go a little bit further upon what Les was talking about is we would have, require a sticker. And staff will have that. And that would, um, be required to go on the sign. That's gonna help for checking the, the dates and things on them. And there, we're talking about hand portable, short-term and temporary signs. Permanent sign has no reason, because it's gonna get a permanent zoning permit for, for the signage on it. And just one, one change is, if you see here, on any individual zoning, at least 30 days must pass after the expiration of one temporary sign permit. Now, the zoning administrator will be putting the time limit on it. But what we got away from is, um, I believe it was 120-day to, what, what's the total that you could have a, a, um, temporary sign out there on it? And Lawrence is as tight as like, like 45 on theirs. But that gets away from a certain number of total days and it helps put discretion with the zoning administrator.
And we're saying 30?
No, that's, that's the amount of time you can't have one up. That's the break.
30 days and then 30 days before you can have a new temporary sign permit.
But then, I mean, there's.
Means you need to look at it holistically. It's not such that you could, every 90 days have a new banner. You could have a banner for 60 days, wait 30 days, and then you could have a different type of temporary sign. Uh, blade or a waving man, but you can't just perpetually renew banners.
Question back then, Les, the six square foot that doesn't require, you say they're exempt?
That's what we have today, that, that a six square foot.
Two by three.
Right, the real estate type signs are exempt from the permitting regulations. They still can't be on the right-of-way.
Okay. Are you counting both sides of that in the six footers or just one, whether they have advertising on it?
One face.
If it's double-faced?
If it's double-faced, it's just one six-square-foot sign.
But do we anticipate an increase in the usage of, if we, if they have to go through all this other to, you know, take the permit out and, uh, for the, the bigger signage, are, uh, are we gonna see a big influx on the usage of those, uh, the exempt ones?
I don't know how it could get much more than that.
Yeah, I know.
I can, I mean, I can see what you're saying, you know, like.
I can get away, yeah, I can get this and, and I can have 100 of them in a row, but there, we have 100 of them in a row now, is it?
To get a, one continuous message, but to do it in small signs.
Okay, I was.
We've provided some additional methods for temporary, short-term signage.
Okay.
Such that they could get a permit for, uh, sign that's on a more, almost permanent basis for up to six months.
Hmm, okay.
But it has to be fastened to the ground. It can't be a banner on T-posts.
Um, there'd be no permit required for window signs, but there is some, um, percentage of a building facade or something like that that would control that. Now, this one's really important to you. And you can see the first one, legally non-conforming permanent signs. The concept, um, from the comprehensive plan is to allow amortization over a 10-year period. Seen as tight as seven years, five years on that. So 10 years is certainly generous. It's a lot of folks, for folks to have a, a legal non-conforming permanent sign. On the legal non-conforming hand-portable and short-term signs, that's as tight as one year. That's looking at the economic value of, of that particular type of signage. Food trucks. Um, the first bullet there, prohibited from vending in residential zoning districts. You might recall, and this came up in the workshop discussion, was, well, why not let anybody just have a, a food truck shop in your neighborhood and let them park it in your, you know, driveway or something like that? Well, uh, we got into discussions about, um, uh, at what point is it catered? Should that be allowed? That whoever is doing that is gonna, basically, it's gonna serve as a caterer. They're not selling out of it. But the, the recommendation is. But the, the recommendation is that don't allow for just random throughout residential zoning districts for the food trucks. That, that's, that's the recommendation.
Ice cream man fits into that? Okay, good. I mean, who doesn't like ice cream?
And what's the difference that you can identify?
The ice cream vendor is traveling. The food trucks pull over and park there, stationary.
But you can see some of the other regulations associated that distances from certain things and so forth on it. A lot of thought went into, to working that out. Accessory dwelling units. That's an important item that, that you can work with, you know, you mentioned, you're talking about the two family housing increases density. Accessory dwelling units can help increase density, but they also meet a social need of having older folks or other people, I recall reading about one disabled folks that, you know, want to be independent, but yet one, one of the things to, I think, make particular note of is it's going to be on a lot with or within a permitted, single family dwelling unit. So this is intended to go adjacent and be, be part of a other living situation. Do you see any questions there on those bullet points?
Is there any maximum size of the accessory dwelling unit? I think there is, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it, it doesn't start turning into a multi-generational house that, you know, you just
It says not more than half the floor area of the primary dwelling.
Gotcha.
Yeah, you've got a max from there to, to work with.
Max two bedrooms.
Tiny homes. I don't know that you've had a case on that yet, but it's definitely come up. I'm sorry?
I was just saying, not far in Wichita there, fighting that one.
There you go. But you can see the distinction here, tiny house on a foundation on it. But here's the key. In the regulations, they would be required as an accessory dwelling unit. And then the tiny house on wheels is going to be regulated as a recreational vehicle. So that involves, you know, how long it can be parked and where and then that kind of thing. Now wireless communications became a little bit of work with the two thousand sixteen statute you see there. So the small cell and the distributed antenna systems, the, the DAS facilities being allowed in the public right of way. You, you don't have control over that, but let's go further here and look a little deeper at it. The, the idea is that, now I think it's on the next slide here. But just to give you some more background on it, basically can, consider the DAS and the small cell network. They are feeders to the large, larger cell tower on it. And the reason that they're beneficial is you, it's typically data driven. And so it's collecting and allowing for the data and not slowing things down. And then it's sending it on to the larger towers. The small cell might be, show up in a neighborhood. Well, that's going to be a conditional use case on it. The DAS would be something might, the case you just had, perhaps the community college or a school system might need something like that. But I just want to point out again, in a residential zoning district, it'd be a conditional use on it. And then in business and industrial permitted, but, but yet you'd have maximum height restrictions that go with your zoning.
Do we have a regulation on what pole material they use? I think that from my experience, that's been the biggest contention of them is sometimes they'll just go through a, a neighborhood and they'll stick a wooden pole in the ground where the rest of the neighborhood has like fiberglass poles and, or, or metal poles. And they've just, I think it would make sense that we would add that as part of our regulations, that they would match or discreetly come into, into a neighborhood or in a business sector that they try to match, like if you had one up and down end of a road, you wouldn't we just spent a gazillion dollars. You wouldn't want them to put up one that's a wooden pole. We want it to be black poles or something.
I discussed this exact thing at the last council meeting and I, you know, I don't know if there's anything we can do.
Well, I think we put it right here. This is our expectation.
I don't think you can, right?
I think we tell them that's our expectation and I think
You're going to have to tell that to both the FCC and the state of Kansas.
Well.
The FCC and the state of Kansas say, we have no voice in the matter when it's on the public right of way. Now, in public property, yes. We could absolutely require that it be metal or fiberglass or black or gray.
A permitting mechanism that allows that to happen and in that permitting mechanism, it is addressed.
It's not allowed. It's not allowed. It's just, it's just that plain and simple.
But you're talking about the public right of way, are you?
Talking about, yes, we're
In the public right of way, your state legislature gave that right of way.
They did for campaign signs too, and we're violating that.
The FCC and the state of Kansas agree, unlike Reed v. Gilbert and the state of Kansas statute. You have, you have your two regulators who are in full agreement. What do you have to argue?
You have other legal principles at stake. You, you put in your local comprehensive plan that you wanted to get rid of utilities in the right of way. Then you went out and spent three point seven five million dollars clearing that right of way of power lines. All I'm suggesting is, you know, and I'll say this again to the council, that we should try to limit the scope and size of these things.
You have to read the state statute that says it has to be competitively neutral.
Okay, well, that, you know, anything we could, we could do
If you allow West Star to use a wood pole, you have to allow Verizon or Cox or Sprint to use the same.
Yeah, well, we need to change our code.
Any, 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 you know, type of limitation in my view is better than just allowing them to put up, you know, anything they feel like. I, I don't know what the state statute allows them to put up. It just says competitively neutral is
Competitively neutral.
So if we
It's unregulated. We can't prohibit installation of new poles.
Prohibit wasn't the word I was
But it has to be competitively neutral. If we, if we tell
We could attempt to, to do something.
I think there needs to be some notion of No, I think, I think it's worthy to throw in there to, yeah, prefer, recommend that they are compatible.
That might put it in, you know, it's
Not enforceable.
Well, no, it's not, yeah.
Well, let's, let's break it down into the, the two clear distinctions. Is, is everybody comfortable that anything that's in like a residential zoning district is going to be a conditional use? That's going to allow you to talk about what material it is? And then we, we should look for some language that makes sure that allows for the discussion of materials?
The distinction though is, is in if it's in right of way, they can do it the heck they want.
Bear with me here, bear with me here. So the first one is when it's in a designated district, there's going to be private property on it. And you've got distinction here, business, industrial and residential zoning districts. Are you comfortable what we've got there that in business and industrial can be a special use? Again, you're going to be able to talk about it. Same thing in the residential as a conditional use. You're going to talk about it, but we need to add some language in there that will cover you on materials. So is everybody comfortable with that? So that'll take care of one aspect of it. Now let's talk about the right of way. Okay. Perhaps we need to get with legal on this and see how far this can be pushed. Wichita was lucky in that they've been able to create a dialogue with the industry whenever things were looking just a little too much. You can see what happened on one of the, the poles, an example that it was so large and there was enough public outcry that they got that changed. So, or offered to buy property and stuff, so
The state law is very clear and it's perfectly in line with the FCC. There are limits on the size of the device on the pole. There are limits on the size of the cabinetry that would be on the ground.
Well, what I'm suggesting is Les, the only thing we can do for, for the planning commissioner is visit with legal.
Talk to your legislature. They're the ones who gave away our rights. I don't like it. But I've read all of the laws and
But you don't think there's ever been a case where a public entity is challenged either the federal government or the state government?
There is not a more litigious industry in the United States than communications. Do you want to get sideways right out of the box with these regulations with the likes of Verizon and AT&amp;T?
Had we not spent four million dollars on this, this is where you and I disagree.
I'll, I'll disagree with you because I have two agencies who agreed that the city has no rights.
But, but how, how many local governments have put it in their comp plan that they weren't going to do it? Then went and spent four million dollars. I bet you were one of the, at least in the state, we might be the only ones who are in this situation.
I fully agree.
Who collects the franchise fees? Who collects the franchise fees?
There is no franchise fees. The law specifically says that you can't charge a franchise fee.
Do we not license different
No.
right of ways to different entities?
You cannot for telecommunications require a franchise.
Do we, do we do that with electricity though?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Read the law. It's, it absolutely gave away the farm for the local government.
Okay. I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just
I don't see any room to wiggle or I would have already wiggled.
Well, I, I don't believe we're in choosing your battles. And I, I think I think Les' thought is, you know, why do we want to get this up and running with something that's not defensible? And so I'm inclined to, like I said, from the very outset. They had a whole bunch in the Raleigh that they, they made changes. So I think this should run its course. Let's see what happens over legislature, perhaps. The governing body here ought to send a letter to the legislature, you know, just something to keep the dialogue going. But my recommendation would be to, you know, check with legal on it and see how far this can go. But I don't think it should compromise moving the, the regulations and getting them into effect. There's too many other things.
Agreed, yeah.
One of, one of the things, you know, having seen this over a number of years is things progress and they progress because I, you try to do this or you try to do that. And after, you know, might, maybe might be five years or ten years, they change. You know, because of the pressure, because of all the other things, technology.
Only problem is, is once they start sticking them in the right of way, you know, we could wait for but it's changed the whole complexion of what we tried to do there. You know, I mean, it, it, the, the issue is today, in my opinion, for us. I mean, if we don't want the, these things in the, the right of way, we have to attempt to take a stand right now. Because five years, ten years is going to be too late, you know.
Well, and what you're doing, you're putting it under the ground to avoid having all this going on. But that costs you to do it.
Well, I'm just, you know, I guess I've been making a point. I may well get
Well, let me, see, there's some other thing in these regulations that I think you need to get them in place quick. Not, not only relating to all the zoning things we talked about, but big ones, the signage. I think you need to get that in place as quick as you can. So again, the suggestion would be is keep moving forward and then I think mark discussions at the governing body level ought to address exactly what you're talking about.
The next workshop and if we don't, if we don't want to go any further with that, that'll be it.
There, there's, there's a bill in front of the legislature now to give away even more rights to telecommunications. To limit the amount of fees that we can possibly charge. It's, it's ridiculous, the amount of control that both the federal government and the state government are throwing out the baby with the bathwater in order to get communications down to the personal device level.
I'd recommend that Mark explore creating a coalition to fight this battle.
He's got your name and number.
Are we able, are we able to move on?
Please do, thank you.
Electrical vehicle charging stations, the thing to note there is there's different levels in the technology and each comes with its own amount of safety considerations and you can see you're not going to want to have battery exchange stations going on. Those would be in any kind of zoning district, so those would be prohibited. But yet up under level one, that's something to think about in the future. So when it comes up, you want to be prepared for it. Wind energy conversion systems allowed in every zoning district. Maximum heights is going to be the way to control those on it. Planned unit development. The, let's see. Existing PUD regulations, if something's been approved, we'll continue to follow those regulations that were in place on it. The future PUDs are going to be simplified. And just to kind of give you a quick thought on that is when yours was originally developed, that was based upon what was crafted at the state level statute wise. So that's why there's so many pages in there. It just followed that. Today, that's down to one sentence in the statutes. So we've tried in that concept to simplify it. You'll have a preliminary PUD plan and a final PUD plat because the plat is, are going to have the dedications that the governing body will consider. The planning commission is going to provide the notice on it. Now, it's important to note a distinction in, in the new regulations. One is the, for a new PUD, the notification area is based on the entire PUD district and we'll show you a graphic on that in the, the next slide. But for an amended PUD, it's going to be the amendment area. So greater than twenty acres, say they came in and it's an amendment. The PU, the notification area is going to be limited here. And with less than or equal to twenty acres, if they come in for a particular part of the PUD where the blue is the entire PUD. Now, the notification, if they're coming in for the PUD is, that contains the whole PUD is going to be much broader. That's a distinction from, from your existing regulations that tightens up on the notification area. Just some other things that were looked at. Airbnbs on it. Now, Les, didn't, weren't we talking about some specific examples on that?
The Airbnb's are just conditional uses in the residential
Right, that's the thing to, to, to note is that there would be conditional use. Your neighbor just couldn't up and do it because there's going to be considerations. Parking, maybe some screening or things, but so each of these have been thought through. You can see conditional use for short term rentals and conditional use for restaurant patio seating.
What about, I'm not sure I fully understand the patio seating. If you have a restaurant and you want to have outside patio, not sure why we need to have that as a conditional use.
That, that's if you just want to begin to do it. Okay? Let's say if you plant it in and Les, help me out on this, but say we're allowing for it in mixed use. Okay. Let's say if you plant it in and Les helped me out on this, but say we're allowing for it in mixed use. Your requirement there is you're not going to be able to go in the right of way on something like this.
That's for sure.
Yeah. Um, Les, can you give a little more description there?
Well, many times over the last 30 years, we've had cases where, uh, restaurants come up with drive-throughs or outside seating where they might be adjacent to a residential district. And we hear that we don't want to hear it. We don't want to smell it. We don't want to see the lights. So this process would make it a conditional use where all of those questions would have to be answered rather than just outright permitted.
When adjacent to a residential use?
Anytime.
Seems like it could be pointless if it's in the, like in a, along a highway or something. To get a conditional use to do that. I, it's, I mean, who cares at that point?
Well, but that's what you determine when they.
Your business, your business neighbor might. Who cares if it's a tire shop next to a restaurant? Who came first, the chicken or the egg? Was the restaurant there first or the tire shop and one doesn't like the others? Outdoor uses.
Yeah, it's, it seems, it seems like it makes sense for a residential area, but not as much when you got all the other commercial uses, but.
Well, I think that's one of those. You can see how it works out, how often it comes up, can always make a change. This, this protects you a little bit more at this point in time. Start getting out of the gate on the, on the new regulations. Site plan review, um, we've talked about this. Uh, the goal there is to make sure that, you know, sometimes not everybody's able to show up. So you got to have at least four members present. And relative to total membership, you need at least three affirmative votes for something to move forward on it. That just makes sure that there are enough folks involved and looking at it, um, before passing something along or making a decision. The, the, the key thing here in the first two items there, zoning administrator approval option or site plan review is to simplify because same things are so simple that the zoning administrator ought to be able to just make a decision and move, move ahead with it on it. Now, we want to put the control of whether the applicant wants to have a one-stage or a two-stage process. They can make a decision whether they want to take it right to the site plan review and have them, um, include, go for a final application. Or do they want to have a two-stage process where they bring in their ideas in a preliminary fashion and look at it before going to a, a final application on it? And another thing to streamline things some is to allow for administrative adjustments by the, the zoning administrator. Then the final one that came up, um, as, as all this was being worked on is a site plan, uh, that was pretty old. And there was a question, well, wait a minute, is that, that a valid plan? That site plan? Well, this now in the new regulations will provide that once the site plan's approved, it's approved for a five-year period.
But updates can be made to it. Is that true? Is that what you're, or?
They have to come back in for another site plan review after that.
Yeah. I mean, it would depend on how extensive it is. Yeah. I don't, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on, on these last slides here, but we're in process now of making all this come together in terms of ordinances and, and resolution. And working to get all these parts brought together. So ju- just to give you a heads up. At, at the, the public hearing, not only will you be looking at the zoning regulations, subdivision regulations and their definitions. That's going to be a single item for you to consider. But the recommendation is that you would also, um, be looking at the site plan review procedures and, and standards on it. And making a recommendation to the governing body to approve that. Cause the way it's written is that they are going to, um, be the, the final approval, but you all would make a recommendation to them. So you're going to be looking at two things there. The third thing is you need to hold a public hearing relative to the floodplain regulations before that moves forward. So that's the third thing that's going to be on your plate at the public hearing. And I believe there was one other one. Deborah, can you?
That's our next meeting.
That's your next meeting, yes.
That's what we're hoping you will do today is set the date for the public hearing.
And we'll, we'll get all that crafted on all these items that, that would be included in that. And I'm remembering the fourth one. The fourth one is to make a recommendation to the governing body that you would approve the form of the unified development manual. And the thought there is to just have a reconna- recognition at the governing body level that you're putting all of this into, to effect. All those things up there in, in the parts, whether it's the building code, stormwater regulations, um, riparian buffer and all the things you've talked about. That's all going into a single document. And I think it's important that the governing body, um, accept that. So that going forward, if things kind of got off track for a little while, there would be cause to bring it back and get it into the manual. Now Les, Mark, Deborah, you all having Lance, you've been involved in all this going on. Are there anything we ought to mention to them before they consider authorizing the public hearing?
I think you've covered it.
Okay. Any questions you might have before you consider whether or not to have a public hearing?
I just had a question. Um, I mean, we're talking about, you know, a flexible document, you know, seeing about making changes. I mean, what's the process to make changes once we've approved it initially?
Well.
It's, it's the same as what you're going to go through, um, the public hearing. Again, it's the same as what you're doing now. And then the public hearing you hold at the planning commission. And then they, um, provide the recommendation on for the governing body.
It's a big deal.
Yeah, you, you want to get things as.
Right, no.
But not simple.
Right, okay.
Well, yeah, but you're talking about one item rather than.
Right, a huge.
On, I did have a.
We have done it.
Yeah.
I did have one detailed question for you guys and, and, yeah, I hope, hopefully you can answer it, but, uh, yeah, I know in, um, with conditional uses and some special uses. Um, there's in other communities, there's a sunset. If you didn't use your conditional use or your special use in a lot of time. Or if you cease to use that conditional use for that use, say it's a, whatever it's a car lot or whatever. You decide, well, I'm not going to use the car lot anymore and I'll use that for something else. I think there should be some wording in our provisions that, you know, if you cease to use it or it's not being utilized for the approved use, you, you lose it. And, um, and again, it goes back to orderly development and very much like the site plan. If you're not going to do that within a, a certain period of time, it needs to be reconsidered because the conditions have changed so much so, or po- you know, elements have changed. So I think if you haven't done that, I think it's maybe something we ought to really consider.
Conditional uses and variances have that 180-day window to act on that use. You have to apply for a permit and start the use within 180 days. The special use is not because the, the distinction between the two is the conditional use and the variances in action of the board of zoning appeals. Doesn't require an ordinance. A special use is an ordinance. So it, it runs with the land. If that special use isn't activated for years, it's always out there on the books in an ordinance.
Yeah, and that, that's why I'm, I'm thinking it, it may not be a good idea to do that and moving forward. We should change our code so that it says that it just didn't run with the land. If you're not, if you're not going to use your use.
But what is that period? Is it that period six months? Is it 12 months?
Five years, 10 years?
That you're not using.
Twenty years? What, what's the number?
It's if you have a, if someone comes down with an illness and can't run a business for, you know, 18 months to two years.
But usually those uses are, the reason they're special or conditional in the first place is because they're not very, uh, you know, they don't work with their neighbors very well. And so, you know, if you've got something out there and they're not utilizing it, you shouldn't just let it continue, continue to be.
What is that, what is that timeframe?
And I think you could.
Well, let's clarify. We're just talking about conditional and special uses.
That's what I would say.
Okay.
Variants are different, you know.
So we're, we're in good shape relative to conditional uses. That's going to be handled from the 180-day. You're comfortable with that?
Yes. You'd have to take effect within that period of time. Yes. Like Brian's talking about is if, if it's, if they stop running the business for a period of time, does it still carry the weight of special use? Is that?
Well, but, so we're only talking about special uses. Conditional uses, that's, we're good on that. 180-day. And, and we're not talking about.
That's the start.
Right, okay. But, but we're not talking about if the business goes away.
Smells of a regulatory taking if you say you can have it, but if you're not using it, we're going to take it away.
It's a.
Without a public hearing, without.
It, it can be a very good enforcement tool when you have something that's not, wasn't a good fit to begin with.
If it's not a good fit, it shouldn't have been granted.
You made it work and then they chose not to use it. And it's like.
I, I, I think you're talking about a regulatory taking there when you've granted the zoning and you all of a sudden pull it away. That, that smells a little.
But we're only talking about special uses, correct?
Special uses, yeah. Where there's an ordinance on the books.
I think we're into legal.
Yeah, that's one we'll have to, we'll have to ask.
I think we've got two of them here. Okay, uh, now, you know, the, the goal here is, are you comfortable that we've buttoned this up enough to take it to public hearing? That's the basic question. I'm only seeing kind of two, three things, you know. One of them, the, the zoning districts, the two family, that, that, we can take care of that one easy. Um, the other two we just need to follow up on.
I just saw Deborah reach for her knife when you said that's easy.
There is a section in here under special uses called period of validity. A special use is valid for a period of one year from the publication date of its effectuating ordinance unless one of the following conditions applies. Another time period is designated as a condition attached to the special use or an application is filed and a zoning permit is approved during the period of validity. And it goes on. And there's some things about extensions and expiration of validity period. Unless an extension has been granted on a zoning permit or a zoning permit has been obtained during a validity period, the effectuating ordinance for the special use automatically becomes null and void if any validity period expires. I don't know, we may have already addressed your question.
Well, that's what I was asking about. So I like it, I like it.
Okay, good.
I have a problem with after the ordinance is in effect and after the property is being used, that all of a sudden the government comes and takes that use away. The, the first effectuation of that use, I don't have a problem with. But on the back end, I see problems with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So we're now down to two items. Okay. It's, it's in your hands, gentlemen.
Looking for a motion.
What's the motion?
To set the hearing date for next.
Okay.
Please, please.
Make a motion that we set the hearing date for our next meeting, uh, November.
20th.
20th.
Second the motion.
We have, we have a motion by Lynn Heath and a second by, uh, Gary Israel. Uh, to set the hearing date at November 20th, 7:00 PM, 2018. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 I know it's late, but I just want to mention that we did just get reversed on a case in, uh, the appeals court. Actually, the planning commission had recommended the rezoning of this. It was the Terradyne case. It was actually Seacrest versus the city of Andover. But the main reason, I know we sit here in all this boring detail and all this stuff was the court says we really didn't provide any reasons why we turned down this rezoning. Not you guys, you actually approved it. But the city council at the end of the day, when that didn't, it was a 3-3 tie. But no one ever said, under the 17 findings and factors, here's why we're not, not wanting to do it. And we got hit for that in order to allow the zoning.
So the zoning map will be updated accordingly?
Was it even?
There will be an ordinance in front of the city council at their next meeting that they are directed, they are directed to approve. They, they are directed to approve by the.
Took a while.
Yeah, it took three years.
Cause I, I've asked about that a couple of times and.
Right, now they've.
Details matter is what you're saying.
It's just, it, it validates the importance of those 17 questions.
Sure.
Right.
Yes.
It don't matter until you end up in court.
That's right. Uh, we do have two more items. One is member items, starting with Lynn Heath.
None.
None here.
All right. I, I do have a member item. I am resigning, uh, my position effective, uh, January 1, 2019. Uh, so, um, I've enjoyed working here, uh, with this body and, uh, furthering our, uh, community. But, uh, for personal reasons, I'm, I'm going to let someone else, uh, take over.
You're resigning as the position or the committee?
The committee.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's both the subdivision and the planning commission. So, yeah, so January, January 1, you, you have me until January 1.
Well, thank you, Brian, for your time and service. Appreciate it very much.
No items.
No items.
None.
Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second it.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 We quick when we need to be.
Oh, my gosh.